He says he's.
That's not on. Okay, we're going to start the Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee, Thursday, July 6th, and we have several items on our agenda. What I will say in terms of public comment is that on Agenda Items B, C, and D, and E, we will take public comment after each of those, brief public comment after each of those. So I will announce that after we're done with our questions. And also, I'll introduce ourselves. I'm Stacy Goodman, and to my left is Mary Lou Polly, and to my right is Paul Winterstein, and up at the podium is Keith Niven, Director of Development Services Department and Economic Development. And the first item on our agenda is moratorium update.
Thank you. So the six moratorium work items, we're moving them all forward. There's none on tonight. I actually thought there were. Oh, there is, amending parking. So later on in the agenda, we'll deal with parking, which is coming back from PPC. And the others are kind of trekking along. So the next check-in point for the council is going to be August, is it the 7th? Whatever the council meeting is in August. So what I'm planning to do for y'all is to give you a memo that will talk about the progress made on each of the work items and what's left to do, including whatever touchpoints there may be. Monday of this month is District Visions, so that'll be your first opportunity to have a conversation with staff about where we are in the process and what we've learned about the neighborhoods that comprise Central Issaquah. And I think at the end of this month, at the COW, is affordable housing. So you'll get that, the tools that we've identified for affordable housing, and there'll be a conversation about that and our approach that we've come up with, working through a joint commission with Planning Policy Commission, Human Services Commission, and Economic Vitality Commission. Oh, and you guys are also going to get the big presentation from our consultant on architecture and urban design. We've got a draft manual. We're going through that with DC this month. So two DC meetings to kind of work through the nuts and bolts, three DC meetings? So three DC meetings. You can tell I'm a little bit detached. And then you guys get kind of the big presentation at the end of the month. So that's our stuff.
So you mentioned August 7th. It says on the calendar, Council Public Hearing on That's to what, consider?
So at that point, that's your decision point to either lift, extend, or something in between?
So I thought that at another recent council meeting, we talked about when the moratorium actually expired, and wasn't that early October?
So the six months will be September, but we have to have the hearing before. And because we canceled the second meeting in August typically, I'm assuming that's happening this year, it has to be the first meeting in August. So it's just, it's the last touchpoint that we have with you guys before a September.
Was that when it expires, in early September?
Yeah.
I thought.
It's exactly a year.
Okay. So with that in mind, it looks like the calendar has the following schedule for adoption, for the council to consider adopting the different elements. Architectural Fit and Urban Design is October 16th, as is Vertical Mixed Use. Affordable Housing is September 18th. Parking is July 17th. District Visions, November 20th. And so, do you know what the talk is about what's coming forward in early, the recommendation? You know what that is yet, or is it preliminary? We should know. Just say no if it's no.
I don't know what the recommendation is from the administration yet. I would guess that the mayor would like for you to lift the moratorium in August. I'm not sure that we can get you there, but we'll have a conversation about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions about the moratorium calendar? The next item on the agenda is Agenda Bill 7452, Transit-Oriented Development Memorandum, T.O., sorry, Transit-Oriented Development Memorandums of Understanding. That was referred tonight.
Yes. Yeah, you probably just heard about this. Hi, my name is Jen Davis Hayes. I work in Economic Development. I'm the Project Manager for the Transit-Oriented Development. We are here tonight to talk about the two MOUs that are non-binding, but very important for us to move on next steps with this project, as you probably remember. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the project, give you a reminder of the components, and talk about the progress we've made to date and the upcoming timeline, when the decision points are for council, and then get into more details about the MOUs and then our next steps. And we have our development partners here from King County Housing Authority and Spectrum Development Solutions, which will be joining me at the mic as well. Any questions? Okay, so just as a reminder, our Transit-Oriented Development project site is here in Orange. It's next to the Transit Center, which is the White, and across the street from Tibbetts Valley Park. Currently, CenturyLink Business Operations Site is located here and working with them to relocate to the King County Roads Property Site, which we purchased. Putting new locks on next week, so the city is in full possession at this time. And we will be talking about the annexation part of that in the annexation presentation later today. So again, a reminder of the components of the Transit-Oriented Development, and part of these were suggested or required in the request for proposals that we put out. So it's a vertical mixed-use building, which is a great thing to see as far as the building type. We're looking at both affordable and market-rate housing. And if you've been looking at past presentations, the number of affordable units has actually gone up. And so again, that's as, when you create a concept, and then you kind of work through the details, you're able to find ways to provide more and adjust things. And so King County Housing Authority can talk a little more about that during their presentation. There will be ground-floor commercial space, so some of that will be private and some will be publicly owned, we anticipate, and then the connection to the area amenities. So again, looking that it's across the street from the park, we have, they'll have a plaza on that side on Newport, and then also a mid-block crossing that connects directly into where the sidewalk is for the Transit Center. So as the multiple blocks, as we look here, you can see that blue dotted line, those multiple blocks develop over time, they'll have that mid-block all the way through. That blue line there next to the project site is what is defined in the Central Issaquah Plan for a core street. And so this development will build a little more than half the site, the street. And so again, that will help to create that grid system that we want to see to break up the blocks in Central Issaquah. Any questions? Okay. So in general, and again, this is a high level, this is subject to change, and we, you know, of course, we'll want to get things open as quickly as possible. But we're looking at tonight, again, reviewing the MOUs, getting any feedback, and coming back in August to finalize and hopefully get a recommendation to adopt those at August 7th, full council meeting. In September, and that's one of the reasons we need to have that, in order to, for King County Housing Authority, is actually the applicant to the King County TOD Fund. And so that happens in September. By December, we'll know of that $10 million allocation, how much is allocated to this project. And then in the fall of this year and continue into 2018, our development team will be working on the design and permitting. And during that time, we'll be touching base again with council to talk about more of the details again. So tonight's MOUs are non-binding, so it doesn't commit to anything, but it has an intention to go forward and do that. So during that timing, that process of the design and permitting, we'll come forward with an agreement that we'll come to, I'm not sure if it'll be a development agreement or just an agreement, that outlines all the details of the project and make sure that we're all on the same page. So the other funding, you know, securing other funding and doing community outreach will also happen in 2018. And this site is, you know, different than just moving forward and building affordable housing. They actually have to build the other site for the relocation and then demolish and start. So the reality is that the TOD, the residential component and the mixed-use component will be open, anticipating in 2021. So it sounds like far away, but it's actually not too bad. Any questions on general timeline? And then I, this slide talks about, so where are the decision points for the city? So we actually already finalized purchase, and thank you for the King County Roads Property. We did talk to the Finance Committee in May, and we're going to come back to full council in the fall to talk about the multifamily tax exemption. And at that time, we'll have a full analysis of what that means, and we are suggesting for this to be a pilot site to adopt it, so not looking at a larger scope. So here we are tonight at Land and Shore, again, want the finalization for the MOUs on August 7th and et cetera. So the decision points are then starred there, so annexation will be a decision point for you, and I believe it's September. And then if they are successful in getting funding from Arch, the council approves that during their normal process of that Arch funding in 2018. So, okay? Thoughts, questions?
So far?
Okay. Okay, and so how fares from Spectrum Development Solutions will come up and talk about the MOUs.
So can, how do we go back to the schedule? Okay. So just to, hello again, and it's good to see you all. It's good to see you. I know you get it recorded that way. Most people can hear me, so that's not a problem. I wanted to just reemphasize the schedule. This, we, this, King County, who has the TOD funds, they have set up a schedule to make the funds available for different set-aside areas. Issaquah's a set-aside area, Bell Red Corridor's a set-aside, the North Gate area's a set-aside. There's a set-aside for the Des Moines area, and then one around the PacMed Hospital. And King County realized that if they put all of those set-asides out on the market at once, they didn't have enough bond cap, 4% tax credits to be able to support all those projects. So they had to go back in and look at their schedule and stretch them out. And Jen and I went to a meeting where they were looking at doing that, and we said, well, we will have, Issaquah will have land control for this site in July, we said, and so we will be ready for your application. So they said, let's go with Issaquah, let's put them first on the docket. So that's why there's a push. It's always, was always the plan, and we were lucky that it just didn't get delayed, as some of the other set-asides did. And so what's real important is for us to, the RFP is supposed to come out this month, probably next week, and it has to be submitted on September 13th. And we, to submit for that, and then we is the collective we here, we have to have land control. So your annexation, which is supposed to be finalized on September 6th, is really important because it's hard to have land control when it's not even part of Issaquah yet. And second, these, the MOUs, which I will talk about now, we originally were going to have just one tri-party agreement with CenturyLink, the Housing Authority, ourselves, and the city. But we realized there was a whole bunch of parts of the agreement that Century really didn't have to get involved in. They don't really care how many affordable units we're going to put on their site, or what are the amenities going to be, or whether we're building a core street. So we separated them into just two agreements, one that just dealt with the things that were specific to CenturyLink, and the other ones, which were of greater interest to the city, of what we were going to develop on the TOD site itself. So that's why there's two agreements, so that we didn't have to drag CenturyLink through all the other pieces. So this first agreement, which is the MOU, between, which is MOU, there's two agreements, which I just spoke of. One is with CenturyLink, focused on the relocation site. So as a reminder, you're annexing this piece of property that you're going to talk about later today, but out of that, there's a small piece, three acres out of the 20-some acres that you're annexing that will be used to relocate CenturyLink to that location. So we, as the developer, need to build them their new facility. And so we have to reach an agreement with them that they will agree to both what we're going to build and the timing of when that's going to get done. And on top of which, CenturyLink wants to make sure that they're getting full value of their property. They entered into this with the city and said, hey, we were supportive of the city's goals, but that didn't mean that they were willing to donate some, leave some value on the table. They want to get full value. So we are in the process, so part of that whole thing, which it says in that MOU, in the MOU, is we need to get an appraisal done on their existing site, the TOD site, so that they know what the value of their property is, that they're going to be leaving. And then we would get an appraisal done on their new location after, you know, assuming that we built a new building on it. So the appraisal will look at our drawings and say, it's going to be about a 30,000-square foot building, it meets all these criteria, and then there'll be two values. And they want to make sure that if the value of their land is worth more than what they're getting, then we would pay them the difference. The developer would pay them the difference. So the city isn't, you know, isn't involved in that, but they need to, they need to make sure they're getting equal dollars. There was no contribution intended on their part. And the city's involved because they, the city owns the land, and we, Spectrum, actually buy the land from the city or take possession of it from the city before we can build a new facility. We can't build a new facility on land somebody else owns, you know, so we have to take possession of it from title, build a new building on it, and then we would give the completed facility to CenturyLink after it's all done. And they approve our drawings and all those. So that's what the first MOU is all about.
Can I add something real quick? So one of the things, again, timing-wise, is in a lot of, keep on to that schedule of 2021, even though it seems far away, you know, many steps along the way, is that Spectrum needs to do some environmental assessment on the property, and CenturyLink isn't comfortable coming, having them come in and dig holes until they have an MOU in place, right? So that's also an important piece of the timing, so they can, in the fall, start to do that and not delayed further, so.
They essentially has given us approval. What we're doing right now is a survey and the Level 1 environmental, but they won't let us do the destructive, drill holes or take samples until this MOU is complete. So if we have the MOU signed in August by the city, then, and CenturyLink, then we can do that work before the application goes in on September 13th. So there's, again, a tightness of the timeframe that has to come together, because we, the application that's due on September 13th requires that we have geotechnical information and environmental information as part of that application that's due on September 13th. So there isn't any kind of wiggle room in that timeframe. Then the second agreement is the MOU that's between the city, Spectrum, and the King County Housing Authority. It's focused on the TOD site, what's being developed there, how many affordable units, the length of affordability, the street improvements, building the core street, the mid-block crossing, the other amenities that goes into that, and how that all comes together. So that's kind of detailed in that.
And then just the overview, again, to allow them to apply for the King County TOD Fund, to show that we are committed to providing them the site. So that shows site controls opposed to them having to purchase it first.
So we took both of the two MOUs, and we, the sections are highlighted in red are the ones that we thought you guys would want to put your most attention on. And the first one is the city's acquisition of the county property, which the staff has briefed John. You'll hear a little more about that today. It's pretty, getting pretty well completed at that point. And then our, Spectrum's acquisition of the replacement site, you know, and that, you don't want to have us purchase that until we've made a commitment of what we're going to build on the TOD site. And that's what the second MOU does. So the second MOU actually pulls the first MOU in as a condition, but we did it that way so that CenturyLink wouldn't have to get caught up in those pieces. The rest of them are a lot of more formal communications, exclusivity. We do have exclusivity agreement because we didn't want to do all this work and then have CenturyLink sell, you know, the site to somebody else comes in and, you know, offers them 10% more just out of the blue. So once they sign this, then they're locked into working with us all the way through the TOD grant process. They can't, you know, pull the rug out from underneath us at the last minute.
And so you do have a copy of both MOUs, so, and if you have questions about those other sections, we're more than willing to talk about that. But again, we just thought these might be the ones that are most impactful to the city and the decisions that you'll be making, so.
I did read them, and they're largely the same. I have a question about section number nine, and as you've mentioned, the agreements are non-binding, except for sections 6 and 7 above. Section 6 is investigation of the project site, which I understand, but number 7 is communications. And one of them, in the communications section, requires coordination on communication about the project, and it obligates the city, all the parties, including the city, to accurately describe in public statements the TOD project, its various components, and present to the public in a consistent, thoughtful, and positive manner. So I don't have any issue with that with regard to the city, big C, but I just wanted somebody to, at some point, maybe before this comes before the council, to address whether the city council would be caught within that as well. I would think no, but I think that's, I've not.
Typically, when our agreements say "city," capital C, that include, that's you guys. And typically, when we are, if we're talking about the administration, it would be clear that it's either the administration or the city administration. But what Agan Murphy-Wallace has said in the past is if it says "city," big C, that's you guys.
Says the city of Issaquah.
That's you guys.
So I would like for somebody to address that, because that needs to be, I mean, if that, if the city council is bound by this communication vision, then I think that needs to be highlighted.
Your preference, just to be clear, would be that's the city administration is fine, and maybe more appropriate, given that we, communications typically come out from the
When I read it, that popped out.
Okay.
I would agree with Keith. When I read this, and I do interpret the capital C as being the city, but just like you said, the administration has a communications discipline and staff. And it's not too common that council, whether it be leadership or anybody, is, okay, we're going to do press release, let's sit down and talk about that language. I just, I, so I say that because I assumed that this was the administration and their communications.
But we can clarify.
Yeah, and that's all I'm asking. I mean, we can all sit around and talk about how we read it, but it doesn't really mean much. We need somebody to tell us what that intent is, so that we're clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Comment on that. I have a different comment. Okay, so as far as the documents go and the content and the schedule, I don't have any particularly detailed comments about that, except the schedule is hugely tight and requires us to do things in this really fast manner. But the documents themselves seem like you're asking us to move through some administrative processes so that we keep on track, so we get things done. I'm fine with all of that. My bigger concern is that it's a complex project. It's different from all the other kinds of projects, as far as I know, that we've tried to do, that give us affordable housing, and you're going to be coming to a council of seven. You guys are a great tag team, by the way. You really seem to get this, and you understand it. We do not. We have not looked at our housing strategy, and we have never actually comprehensively as a council even discussed what our strategy ought to be towards housing. If you want to make sure this moves through with one touch, you're going to have to give us some sort of primer in here about why this project is different. I heard this project compared a week ago to the TDR request by Polygon, which is entirely different type of project, and that this was just the same kind of thing, and that's from a council person. So we don't know exactly what you have on the table. So we need that information so that we all see that, what kind of project this is, and how does it compare, and I have some ideas I can share with you, Jen, on what that information might look like, because we need to be educated on this. Otherwise, you're going to have people getting stuck, and it's going to be hard for us to make all of your deadlines, and that would be a tragedy.
So just FYI, we did offer other council members briefings before August, understanding that for them, it's one touch, for you, it's two, but, so.
And I'm thinking, were there briefings, I'm actually thinking I'd like to talk to you about what I think might be some suggested content you might want to include to get us all in the same place, to get us all understanding what we see here, and how is it different from what we've seen before. But not having seen the draft housing strategy yet, how does this tie in in terms of meeting the mark?
Good, so that was my next point. And so I'm actually working with Trish on the housing strategy, and so this is actually one of the six points that addresses affordable housing. And so you guys are, again, it's the end of July then, that they'll be here. So it's a discrete project, and again, it talks about this as a pilot for MFTE, but it talks about the TOD, the Transit-Oriented Development Project. So there'll be more discussion around that project in that context as well.
That's great. It's, and I think.
But one of six.
I think the preliminary descriptions we got of the project were good, but I don't think council has a full understanding of what this project is. And so coming with the tight timeline, and this has to move on this date, and not having had the housing strategy, I feel like we might be at a bit of a disadvantage.
Okay.
And so I can provide you some extra comments by email.
Thank you.
We do have, Dan, come out and talk about the Housing Authority. We do have, what's unusual in this is this requirement to, just to be able to submit for the funding from King County. And part of, we don't go into the full details of all the nuts and bolts, because if we were to get $3 million instead of the $10 million, the project probably isn't going anywhere. And so we can't fully design this thing and put it all together without really knowing what the funding support from the county will be. So that's why we're doing this MOU. So it's, and that's why it's non-binding, why it's really a policy document that says this is how we're going to work together. And then, once that application goes in, we can then start to develop the more, we will, we're already, as a requirement of the application, we have to get the site appraised. So we will know more information by the time we submit. The site will, it'll start to show more of the cards on how it all lays out. And then we can work on, the detail and the staff can work to bring the rest of the council along on, you know, what is a city really contributing in all the different ways in which they contribute to make the project work. So this is really approving a policy document, knowing that you get to see the nuts and bolts of it later, but.
And I don't even think I want to go right to the nuts and bolts. It was more. We're about making sure that all of our, that our council has a good understanding of the basic form of the project, so we don't get hung up on what the project is, and that we do move and follow this time schedule.
Okay, okay. If I may make a comment, I think the MOUs do a really good job of laying out the basics of this. We understand the land that's involved, the who and their roles, we're agreeing with one another or in-between parties. Even though, it's interesting, they're three-way MOUs, and yet, there's sections in there that just include two parties.
Right.
And, but, but I did find that reading them, I think, does give a very good picture of the moving parts. So I just, that's a kudos. I do have, I will have, at the appropriate time, some very specific questions about some of the language, so want to continue with what your plan was, and we'll make time for that.
Okay. We were going to move to the next agreement, which is the agreement between the city, Spectrum, and King County Housing Authority. And we've highlighted those sections, and I'll let Dan talk a little bit about that agreement, how it ties in the affordable units, and how those are intermixed as well.
I'm Dan Watson. I'm the Deputy Director for the King County Housing Authority. We're excited to be a part of this project. But what's important to understand is that there is the affordable component of this is obviously part of the vision that was originally given to us, but it's also critical in terms of attracting the funding from the county. And we've also put in other levels of subsidy, and I think that gets at the question about your ultimate strategy, why this is different than other projects, because it's the targeting, it's the interplay between the levels of affordability and the funding. And so we are really targeting a workforce population at what is called, you know, 60% of the area median income. And that's also attractive to getting the funding from the county. We were the recipient of three other fund, funding grants last year out of this particular TOD fund, so that's one thing that made it particularly attractive to us, to work on this project in Issaquah, because it was well-positioned to take advantage of the funding that's being provided through the county. So what we're looking at, we originally envisioned 125 affordable units, but some of the feedback we got was that, well, let's look at that per-unit subsidy, if you divide that into $10 million. And they thought, well, the county, sort of the informal feedback was, seems a little high, so we think we can actually make it a little more efficient use of the site and the podium deck by maybe bumping that up to 155 units, slightly smaller units, maybe a little bed, different bedroom mix, but that'll get our per-unit subsidy down and position us better. But the. But the cri, the critical elements is gaining site control before September 13th, getting our whole application together with all the various appraisals and environmental work. And that's absolutely crucial to, to getting the $10 million, which is crucial to making this project work. So it all kind of interplays amongst itself. And certainly, we can get into a lot more detail as to how that's all going to lay out. But this MOU doesn't get into those specifics, but talks about just the fact that this is affordable and market rate housing in one project with lots of other public amenities and infrastructure.
One, we've been working, trying to make our application more competitive. And this is the application for the King County funds. And we realized our cost per unit was too high for the, when we allocated everything out. So we increased, we looked at our building efficiency, the podium, maximizing the use of the podium, so we can really take what were sunk costs, or fixed costs, like building the roads doesn't change based on how many units we're building, putting the mid-block crossing doesn't change. Even building the podium itself doesn't change. If we can get more units on that same podium, we are able to spread those costs over more units. When we were last with, here, giving you the general overview, on the Spectrum side, we had 20% of our units were affordable, between 70 and 80% of area median income. And, but just for the 12-year period of the tax exemption that was going to go with it. And that, that wasn't, wasn't playing out as well as we would have liked. So we went back and looked at our numbers and said, if we can make 10% of our units affordable, permanently affordable, that adds 20 units on top of what the Housing Authority is doing. And that gets us up into that 180 affordable units, and, and really starts bringing that cost down per unit. So we have that mix. We always had a mix of affordable units and market rate on the Spectrum side. But now we've been able to look at those and, and reduce the number, but make them permanently affordable to help really make it a long-term affordable project. So that's how the application will be presented and put forth going into it. And I think, you know, this is probably well beyond anything in your housing strategy. In one site, it's largely gained by both the Housing Authority's significant participation in the project, a lot of their own money, their own loan that's going into this. This is not just your regular not-for-profit coming in as a partnering on this. They are putting a substantial amount of their own resources into this, but also the set aside, which is making it happen. So anyway, it's a.
Well, I might add, too, the one thing we are, you normally do is we will put in an additional layer of rental subsidies on a small number of units, somewhere between 20 and 40 units, that will serve very low-income families primarily. As part of an overall strategy to get more lower-income families in areas of high opportunity, such as Issaquah, that have jobs, services, and good schools. So that's, that's something we will do with our own resources.
So the, Jen, I skipped ahead here, but the, the MOU between the city, the Housing Authority, and Spectrum, the items we highlighted are first replacement site agreement. That was the first MOU we just talked about. Those ones, then we have the project site agreement itself, where we have the description, the open space, community space, the sensitive areas and buffers around the site, residential units and density, and the affordability that we just talked about, the commercial unit uses on the ground floor. We still have a continued strong interest from the Bright Horizons Daycare and the Northwest Kidney Center that want to go into the, into this facility. And some people aren't as enthused about the Kidney Center, and they remind us that one in six Americans will have kidney disease in their life. So it's a significant advantage for Issaquah to have that kind of resource here to serve your constituents. We have the site design standards, which we'll get into, your design criteria, parking requirements, which we're right now meeting your code. All of our parking, is structured parking on this site. So it's beyond what you're talking about later today. It does, we are a little bit concerned about this parking requirement as it applies to the CenturyLink replacement site, which is in your urban core. And making sure that the parking we're building there counts as structured parking, because if we have to build their service facility on top of parking or something, it would not work.
Not urban core, but Central Issaquah area.
Right, yeah, so as you talked about.
And a theory right now, so council has to decide whether or not they want to.
Right, and you also have to decide what you're deciding about parking as well.
Right.
Correct. So council still has yet to decide whether or not the CenturyLink site will be. And so this parking concern has not yet been.
Right, okay. I was just reading ahead in your agenda, and I was like, you know. The infrastructure requirements are spelled out, what will ultimately be spelled out in terms of what we're having to do, that's one of the big challenges. Because as, as you develop the Issaquah itself, you don't have the infrastructure, roads, sewers, all those kind of things aren't in place, so that makes the cost high. And then our schedule, which we've talked about. The multifamily tax exemption, which Jen says will come up later to the council, but that'll be an important part for this project to make it work, to, to be able to adopt that, even if it's a pilot project for this project. And I think she's going to get into that later with the council, not today, but at another time. And then the impact fees, most of those are called out in your current regulations already. The impact fees that are waived as a result for those that apply to the affordable units. The market rate units still have to pay the impact fees, but the affordable units are in your current regulations. Many of them, you do not. And then we do know that the core, the street improvements we make to the core street, those can offset the traffic impact fees that otherwise would be paid, because that's one of your identified capital projects. And that, when you, it'll be important for the city to identify, and we can help you do that, is, is what is the city really contributing with the waiver of all those impact fees? Because as part of this application going in for the county, we have to show, they want to see that the city is contributing as well. That this isn't happening just by the, the Housing Authority's participation and the county's participation. And so waiving of impact fees is not consistent of all, around our east side cities. Redmond doesn't waive impact fees, so the fact that Issaquah does can show as a, essentially a contribution being made by the city.
Is that Issaquah's financial contribution, is the waiving of the, this?
And MFTE.
And the provision of property.
The land, the, the site we get. Right, and the MFTE, all those would count.
Okay.
But, but again, you mentioned, we're, we're doing that analysis, and we'll provide, again, that information, so you're aware of that. But that's something that's, for the impact fees is already in the code, so we're not asking for anything different.
No, right.
So we would get a, a cost per unit, which is made up of whatever the MFTE contribution is, whatever the impact fee waivers is, the land that's donated, or cash that the city puts in. We would know what the city has contributed per unit. Perfect.
Okay, I think that's all the overview we're having, and then if there are specific questions that we can answer.
Question or comment? Question. Okay. So I know it's ahead on the agenda, but how significant of an, of an impact to the project requirements is it, whether or not the parcel, the new CenturyLink parcel is in or out of the Central Issaquah area in terms of impacts to either the cost of the project, whatever?
We, I went through your, the intense commercial zoning and the standards, the design standards that apply to that, looking to see if there's things in there that really don't fit, given its location. I mean, it's, it's up there, you know, behind your maintenance, the city's maintenance facility, behind the trailer park, you know, those kind of things. In, as a whole, they weren't, I, I was expecting to see a lot more requirements that really weren't applicable, and I was, it wasn't, it wasn't that extensive. We're still allowed to have chain link fence, is still allowed within intense commercial. You can put barbed wire on top of it, not that we're intending on doing that, or I don't think, I mean, CenturyLink, I don't think they have that now, so I don't see why they would want that. It does require landscape screening if you have a chain link fence. So there, we might say, you know, that's applicable for the frontage that faces when you come up to it, but when you get back in the woods there, you know, is that, is that, that important? So we had a provision in the MOU that we would go through and look at those and identify those kind of things that maybe aren't applicable to come back and ask for exceptions to some of those standards, not having identified every one. We are, we are concerned, as you were, if you were to adopt this into Central Issaquah and then add a structured parking requirement. And we don't, we, CenturyLink wants to have the parking we're providing for them covered and secured. I mean, walls all around or the roof over it, like a service facility, like they have now. And we don't think, we think that would meet the definition of structured parking as compared to a carport. But that would be important to us, because we, this would make so sense to build a service facility and have it look like an urban project worth, you know, underground parking or anything like that.
Thanks.
I mean, they have five or 7,000 square feet, it's like locker rooms for their crew, you know, and little teeny 500-square-foot office, and all the rest of it is for parking their service vehicles. That's what the building's about, so. So those are, we don't know what, well, I guess what our concern is, is what new provisions might be added that we're not aware of, that would be applied to this, that we don't know what that, those might be.
Yeah, well, I guess we will be talking about parking, but the, later on, and even what's listed in there, the idea that such a yard would be classified as office, because the parking that we're considering is only regarding to office and residential, at least as currently presented, so it doesn't strike me as office.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get to that. You know, the, the second MOU, so I'm going to go down to some of the language, just to make sure I understand.
Sure, that's what this is really about, is if you've got concern on language.
Some of them are going to be very easy.
Make suggestions.
Excuse me, sorry, Hal.
Okay.
I think some of these are going to be easy. And down in there in paragraph C, it does say, in the second to last sentence, it does say, "including destination businesses." Just give me, what's a, what's a destination business?
For the TOD, so that would be the, the Kidney Center, correct?
It could be a lot of things, so.
It's a definition I wasn't familiar with, the destination businesses, as opposed to non-destination businesses.
I would say, as compared to something where you're driving by, you know.
They receive customers.
You know, just convenience. So people might go from more than just a immediate vicinity to get to it. So the Kidney Center would definitely fit into that category. We're going to draw from a catchment area, from Snoqualmie to, they have a facility in Bellevue. So it's going to draw from a larger area to come to that facility.
And I think as an economic development term, that's typically correct. So it's neighborhood serving versus a destination. So even the daycare could be destination, because it's maybe people from the Highlands coming down. So it's not just serving that particular neighborhood, like a coffee shop may do that, so.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Down in paragraph E, has an odd comment in there. It says, even that, part of that first sentence, it says.
Will be comprised of a mix of. So, will be comprised of a mix of affordable and workforce-market rate housing. So the, right, I'm not familiar with, I'm familiar with affordable housing, but workforce-market rate housing, what is that?
Sure, so the, affordable housing would be, would be rent restricted or, or income regulated. So that would be affordable to people making 40% of area median income, 60%. Market rate workforce is not rent restricted. So that, but it's targeted, in our case, we call it workforce. Workforce doesn't really have a, a hard and fixed definition, but it generally goes from 60% to a, to 100% of area median income is the, is the income group you're trying to target for that. So, but it's not rent restricted. When it says market rate, that generally means not rent restricted, or not income restricted, I should say, to who can live there. So people don't have to come in and say, I'm making $60,000 a unit, or making $80,000 a year, and I want to rent this unit. People can rent that unit regardless of how much income.
Okay, so if it said affordable and market rate housing, I didn't change it by dropping the word workforce at all.
Same thing. That's the same thing.
Thank you. Hal, you, you said earlier how essential, you said that the, maybe you used the word essential for the MFTE. How essential is it?
I don't think we could.
Mentioned down in paragraph H, by the way.
Right. We, we submitted in our application, that we were asked to say, you know, how important is this? And if the city were not to pass it, what, what would that mean? It's about a $7 million, you know, economic present value of that tax exemption. Not, that's the whole, that's not the city's portion, that's the entire tax exemption. The city's portion, I think we calculated, is about a million, a little over $1 million over 12 years, is the city's portion of that tax exemption. And that's a rough estimate on my part. But that's, that's really important to us. We, we can't make the market rate side of this work without that multifamily tax exemption.
And, and just to be clear, the, the Housing Authority's portion of this is already tax exempt. So we're really just talking about the market rate component here. We are under state law exempt from local property taxes.
The Housing Authority's.
And we can get into this detail later, but currently, there are no property taxes being collected on the CenturyLink operation site. So when, it's more of an opportunity cost of missing out on over 12 years. But at the end of 12 years, the city would then start to collect that on the residential. The land is, will still be taxed, so actually, there'll be some additional money.
Yeah, we still pay, the market rate side still, the portion of the project not owned by the Housing Authority still pays property taxes on the land. It's only the improvements that are exempt. And the, the daycare pays taxes on the improvements, it's not exempt from that. I believe the Northwest Kidney Center is exempt from property taxes because of what they do. And the adult family home, if they were to go in there, is probably also property tax exempt. Regardless of you passing the multifamily tax exemption, they would be exempt anyway.
So Jen, regarding MFTE, the question that will come in front of the council in the future will be the applicability of it to market rate housing in this project.
Meaning, you're saying that's what we need to communicate? I'm sorry.
It's a question for you, is, because.
Yes.
The call conversations I've been part of about MFTE was, was about an incentive to actually for, to obtain affordable housing.
Gotcha, right.
This context, it's not.
It's, it's, it basically is the residential, so it kind of helps to pay for, right? So it's, it's giving you a tax exemption on all the residential portion of the market rate. Again, King County aside. So therefore, you get, you're, they're able to provide the affordable housing and then the market rate.
Part of the finance.
They wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't be able to afford the affordable housing if they didn't have that tax exemption on the whole thing. So I'm trying to figure out how to answer that differently.
I thought I said, Dan, I thought you said earlier that the units that you would own, if I'm saying this correctly, are already tax exempt? There's no, well, over 15-year limit.
We don't, we don't, what I'm trying to say is that the MFTE ordinance wouldn't be essential to our component of it. But the, the concept here is that to be able to do an affordable housing project, if you will, that has both market and affordable, oftentimes requires an exemption on the whole, the whole parcel. And that's the way the MFT ordinances have worked in other jurisdictions, where that it provides an incentive to do both, provide.
So that works, I understand now. I understand now. It's, it's the entire project would apply. There would be a mix, your units would be tax exempt as it is. But this, so coming forward would be an MFTE proposal for this entire project.
Exactly, so that we don't have to rely on any one type of exemption that the entire project would, would receive that, so. And it's absolutely critical, like, like Hal said, in order to be able to even make the economics of this work. And even then, it's going to be quite challenging.
Some of the, you see a lot of those mixed-use projects being built all around our greater community, all the cities. And why, why it's a challenge here in Issaquah, and why you haven't seen that action here in Central Issaquah, there's two big things. One, we have to build structured parking to make this transit project look the way it's going to look, and to maximize the units on the site. And people don't pay to park in Issaquah, they pay very little to park in Issaquah. So if you were actually building structured parking, you'd have to be able to get $250 to $300 a month for each parking stall, just to pay for the cost to build that. But in Issaquah, I mean, we, if, especially given where this one's located, as soon as we start charging people to park, which we will, they're going to go find some place where it's free to park, which is on the street or in the parking lot next door. So we, the rents of the units above are basically subsidizing the structured parking. And that's something you have to always think about, as you add structured parking requirements, is the rent that people are charging is what's subsidizing that parking. So that's one, what's, one challenge here in Issaquah, where downtown Bellevue, the people pay a lot more to park, downtown Seattle, they pay a lot more to park. And our concrete costs just as much here as it does in those cities. The other thing is, we, in, in the valley of Issaquah, you have really soft soils. The ground is, bearing soil is 55 to 75 feet deep. We have to support this structure on auger cast, piling, or with a mat slab. And that adds to this site, it adds about $2 million to the site development costs that you would not have on. development costs, that you would not have on the Highlands, for example, where they have bearing soil that is upgraded. So you have an economic burden that you're at, that is requirement of building in Issaquah, in the valley floor, that isn't in the areas when you get away from the valley. And they have to, we can't charge more for rent unless people are willing to pay it, which that isn't necessarily the case. So we have to make it up, you know, somehow. And those are the challenges, some of the challenges we face on this project. Unique to Issaquah.
What we've heard, so thank you, that's interesting, about the soils. So what we keep hearing is that the market isn't right yet to support the, you know, the kind of units that we're wanting with the housing. And so, I don't know what, that seems to be, the soils issue seems to be something that, I don't know what market is going to, I mean, this is the, I don't remember a better market.
Right.
So if we're not gonna get what we want now, when will we get it? It sounds like the soils issue isn't just on your side, you're saying it's in the valley. So that sounds like something that we haven't actually addressed yet, about how we're going to factor that into how we get what we want on the valley floor when we have that unique circumstance.
Right. I mean, it's a, it is a challenge everybody's going to face as they move forward with their developments, and they need.
That's major. That's brand new, that's huge new information that we've never heard.
When we are trying to say that where we are going to grow is the valley floor, and the fact that the building conditions down there are different than the rest of the city, we're just creating ourselves in foot, because they're not.
Not gonna build on the valley floor.
It's more expensive to build on the valley. And the retail, as you require, we are fortunate that we were able to attract two good quality tenants that can take up most of the commercial space. And so if you have commercial requirements, this otherwise isn't a great retail location, because, you know, during the day, there aren't a lot of people buzzing around there coming in to buy things where people can pay rent. So as you require commercial on the ground floor, that you can't find an economic, anybody willing to pay, it makes it a challenge to develop. So Atlas, for example, doesn't have any retail.
So what'd you say it adds?
$2 million.
What did I say?
To your site, $2 million to your site?
To our site.
Do you have, like, a square foot?
Yeah, it's 15 to $20 per square foot for the fund, it added premium for the foundation cost.
The other factor you have to think about is, is sometimes the land value itself can be less because of it.
Right.
So it's not like you're gonna pay the same amount here in Issaquah as you might say somewhere else that has bearing soil.
Right.
So it's, it's a kind of a more complicated mix of economic factors. But I think the, the good news is, we have kind of what's called a catalyst project. I mean, it's, it's why you have all of these different incentives to get this started. And we hope that that will kind of start to lead the way for the kind of development that you wanna see here in Issaquah. And, you know, and the land values, it all kind of intermix, but I, I think, just from what I've seen, Issaquah's got great opportunities for residential development and for affordable housing, something you don't see in too many other eastside cities, frankly.
Well, I don't need to go down that rabbit hole. I just wanted to point out that that was significant. So I took the floor from Paul, because he had questions, continuing his questions on the MOU.
Thank you. And, and impact fees in number five, paragraph five, it does, the, the IMCs that list cover school, traffic, park, and fire. And you specifically call out traffic. So is the intent to waive all of those, school, park, and fire, as well as traffic?
It's currently, the IMC currently does that, yes. We specifically called out the, for affordable units, so not the market rate. So we will still be getting impact fees for the market rate units in Spectrum's development. But we called out the traffic one, because again, it's in this T I P, so to kind of address that, 'cause it's not, so that, so the traffic impact fees for the market rate, let's say, I'm just making up numbers, maybe I shouldn't, but if it's $1 million to build the road, and they would have had to pay $1 million into traffic impact fees, that means they get a credit, and they don't have to pay anything into impact fees. If it's upside the other way, then they actually pay more, you know, pay into the fund, but less minus the cost of building the core road. So we just pointed that out, because that's, again, in our T I P currently.
Okay, again, so, so fire schools and park, you're anticipating waiving those as well?
Those are currently in the IMC, yes.
For the affordable units.
Can you say it's in the IMC, so the recent Polygon deal, they're also waived for 48 units up there, same fee?
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
So the IMC says at, at 50, 70, 80. That's what all of those, all those references to the IMC 3, 63, 71, 72, and 73, are only affordable at 50, 70, and 80% of AMI.
Right. So our, the affordable that, in, in Spectrum, for instance, is only if we do the M F Ts at 80, and the ones in King County are lower, lower.
40 and 60.
40 and 60. So those do meet below those. Good, yeah.
Okay.
So maybe that's why I was not there. Good, good answer yourself, Paul, for that.
All right, thank you. That was the extent of my questions. On the language.
Thank you.
Hold on.
This is definitely the type of information and feedback we wanna get, so that we are able to come back in August with a more formal.
We're, we're anticipating we'd make red lines to this document you got a draft of. We have to get sent, we have not received CenturyLink's comments yet. We have, Jen and I have a call with them next week. And we hope to get their comments in time. Also, I mean, we have, we need their comments to this MOU before we come back on the third, because you go from there to the seventh, and we can't, you know, you can sign it, we can sign it, but if we, CenturyLink hasn't signed it, we're not getting very far, so.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to call, thanks very much. Call for a public comment. Anybody has any comment? This is the time. Connie?
So Connie Marsh, and it'd be way easier if you had the public on board with this, because they knew it was happening, but the, the community outreach is after you've made most of the decisions. And it's typical for the town, but entirely inappropriate, because every time you all decide you wanna do something, and then you surprise the public with it, then you have to explain it all to them, and they get outraged that, gee, you guys decided that you're gonna use our money and provide a tax break, and we never heard about it. And now you're telling us in retrospect that you already did it, and we didn't know anything, because you didn't tell us. So I think, yet again, you've got it backwards, and it'll probably hit the fan again, which is too bad, because this is one of those things that would be nice to happen, but we've just gotta get out of the habit of leaving the public behind when we make these, these deals. I don't, I don't know how many times I have to say that. I don't know. I'm, I'll leave my, the rest of my comments to the later item.
Thank you. Next. Steve?
Found a pen. Steve Rurra, 170 Northeast Dogwood Street. So a couple thoughts. One is, I guess it's the proposed spot of where the, the transfer development would grow to, and zoning of that, which seems to be at the base of sloped area, has some concern for me. I very much like the affordable housing, so I'm trying to weigh those. Don't have a definitive answer yet. I think there's also an opportunity here in, when these things get presented, there's an educational opportunity for anybody who reads the documentation, to talk about things like affordable housing and 60, 80, 100, 120% to include that documentation and inclusion, so that folks don't get taken for granted and can be informed of the subject. So I'd like to see more of that in documentation going forward. Part of this, I guess also, and it's looking ahead, the structured parking concern, I would like to see structured parking as part of this. Anytime we're gonna lose trees or tree canopy, that's kind of what we're talking about, is some sprawl, and I would like to see that constrained. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay, seeing none. We are supposed to be taking action on this, making a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, comments, you mean?
Comment, question. Question for you guys.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
Okay.
So we're gonna be taking action, so now would be time for additional questions and comments on the committee.
Okay.
Who wants to start? You can start. So Keith or Jen, what is the plan for community outreach?
Actually, I'm gonna bring Hal back up as well, 'cause we, we talked, you know, about this briefly, but we are planning to create a website that has some basic information, and it's helpful to hear some of these questions, so we can address, so we can actually link to show what 16, 80% area median income is. And then as far as the design process, I'll let Hal talk about that and his thinking.
The, the timing of this King County grant kind of interrupts how we normally would have gone about doing this. And I respect what the comment made, and not just about the economics of it, but just the physical attributes as well. And so we would normally, ourselves, host a number of open houses to talk about what the development's going to be. And we still intend on doing that. We are still at a conceptual design, kind of amassing density capacity kind of phase, just to make this application in. We, for our submission for the, to the city, you know, we went kind of further with embellishing what it might look like. But we really like to get input from the community about what are the amenities, what are the, how does it work, how does it fit into the community, you know, what does it look like? And we're responsive to that. So we would, we would, given where we are in the summer and when this application goes in for King County, we would probably start that right after that goes in on the 13th of September. And then we would hold a number of open houses from, without knowing how much money we're getting yet, but just so that we have that input from them. Because we would like to go, if we find we get the funding as we would hope for in December, you know, we're gonna wanna go. Certainly with the design of the new replacement facility. And so to the extent we can get public input prior to that, then we can incorporate their comments into what we're doing as we move forward. So I would say this fall, we would take that up between the 13th of September and the middle of December, when we get the, you know, the reward, or the award identification from the county.
Great, thank you. Other comments or questions? You have something?
So, so the, so the action is, is just approving going forward with the MOUs.
Right.
These non-binding MOUs.
I'm sorry, said it last part?
The, the act, the question for us, the legislative question, is approval to go forward with the MOUs.
To, yeah, to recommend to the full council for approval, yes.
Great.
Yep.
And so we do have the opportunity to come back in, on August 3rd, but if you feel comfortable enough, we'll make the adjustments that you, you mentioned, that could move forward.
Yeah. Yes, feel very, very comfortable with everything that you presented and Hal's answer to when the public engagement might start, might, what it might look like would be good. Still think we need to have some sort of primer for the four council members who are not here. I'm not sure that just reaching out and asking them if they have questions is good enough. I actually think there has to be more material in the package. And also, the question about how is this different than other projects we've approved is very important, I think, for the council to understand. Even though all we're talking about is the MOU, I think it's important that they get that information now. The presentation tonight was great. You're really very, very clear and concise, and I love the answer on the public outreach.
Last one.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with moving forward.
Yeah, okay. You know, regular agenda. Oh, yeah. My.
On what day?
Uh, August 7th. Wait, I mean, are you regular, or, not thinking consent, are we?
Regular.
Yeah, Keith questioned that, I'm like, check my understanding.
No, I think they were looking at each other, 'cause they're not sure.
Okay.
There you go.
All right.
She's on vacation. So it'll be me, it'll be me in a wig in hell.
All right. So whoever's there, regular agenda. Thank you very much. Thanks to Hal and Dan for coming. Okay, next item on the agenda, Agenda Bill 7345, Amending Parking Requirements in the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards. This is also to be acted on tonight. Lucy Sloman.
Oops. Hey, where did I, oh, I know what happened. I'm gonna start over. Okay. Good evening. Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager. So just to give you a little bit of a summary, I realized as I was sitting here tonight, that a year ago, we were doing the Central Issaquah Evaluation, which led to all of this. So at that time, we, you know, we evaluated a selection of projects, and seven residential projects had structured parking, and all but one of the commercial projects didn't have structured parking. The moratorium was approved on September 6th, and parking was one of six items. And that resulted, the RFQ had two questions, is Issaquah parked right or not, and should structured parking be required? In March, we hired a consultant team, Farr and Peers, with a subconsultant of Eco Northwest. On June 7th, we were before you, and you present, after our presentation, and based on the consultant work, you recommended leaving the parking standards unchanged and implementing structured parking requirement, asked us some questions. We went off and wrote code and presented that to PPC, Planning Policy Commission, on June 22nd. And they recommended approval with some adjustments to those requirements. So that's the big overview. So just to take a step back to what happened on June 7th, we had presentations by our two teams, Farr and Peers.
Saving measure.
It saved a lot.
Just in case faces trigger memories for you, like me. So Farr and Peers said that the, based on their evaluation, parking minimums were set appropriately, developers were building more than the minimum, they thought there was a low risk of parking spillover, and that we were gonna see on-street parking utilization grow, partly, mostly because of convenience. Eco Northwest found that structured parking greater than 50% will be a challenge. Structured parking is impacted by the type of construction and development, and that unique site characterization, characteristics, sorry, I can't even read, can more easily accommodate structured parking. So different kinds of sites can handle structured parking more easily. So we brought you a very broad brush recommendation last time, which was for office, 33% structured parking over 5,000 square feet, for residential, 33% structured parking, and retail, no requirement, it would remain encouraged. And the Planning Policy Commission, so the orange highlights where things changed after their discussion, they recommended 50% for office, same-size buildings, 50% residential. They did not have a requirement on retail, that was a big, big discussion, and they would like the staff to return in a year to have further discussion. And we were recommending with PPC and E B C to have a more complete conversation. So that's the, and the administration supported that recommendation. Yes. So, this is the slide we spent a lot of time on last time, and will likely tonight as well. I've added some things to it.
So, oh, we're done. Never mind.
Oh. So, staff, so the basis of this, staff did an analysis of many structured parking projects, or many parking, many projects, to see what kind of amounts of structured parking there were, looking at office, residential, and retail. The percentages, I think, just to focus on, there's a high and a low, which is, I think, what we brought to you before. Averages were 43% for office, median of 31. Residential aver- Residential average, 45, median 31. Retail average, 21 percent, median 12 percent. So at the same time, Eco Northwest did their analysis, looking at our market, and they were in general seeing that somewhere between 25 percent and 50 percent was where projects, 25 percent to 50 percent structured parking, in that range was where projects became infeasible. A lot of what we are discussing is how to achieve the Isqwa, Central Isqwa vision and avoiding unintended consequences. I think a big piece, the policy decisions are a big piece of what was kind of underlying the conversation at PPC. The administration's recommendation of 33 percent, you can see that is closely aligned with the median that we were seeing in projects. It falls between the range, in the range that Eco Northwest had identified. And so it was a somewhat conservative recommendation. PPC was interested in a more aspirational number. And so instead of being closer to the median, they're more at the average. The public who spoke and the commissioners felt that we should be taking a bigger step. I think the administration and staff felt that the 33 percent was a more incremental step that could be revisited, you know, in the same way that we're visiting Central Isqwa about every three years with a report, that that would be an opportunity to revisit that and see if we needed to take another step. PPC, as part of that aspirational approach, was recommending a bigger initial step.
So I have a question. So there's, the recommendation is no change in the, sorry, no change in the retail now?
So no change in the retail. I think that there was, so from the administration's perspective, that there was, so if you look at Eco Northwest's range was 20, somewhere between 25 and 50 percent, which was like the other uses. But when you look at the projects that have been built, there's a much lower average and a much lower median. There was uncertainty about how to not impact local small businesses and how to not favor, say, national chains over local businesses. So with that uncertainty, at this point, there was an unwillingness on the administration's part to put a recommendation forward. And I think because of the information we had, PPC, although they really wanted to establish a percentage, understood the uncertainty associated with doing that, and that's why they asked us to return for a conversation next year.
So does that mean that, like a redevelopment with retail then, we just are going to continue to get strip mall? It's all retail?
No. I think that there, well, I think first of all, we are, I think the Central Isqwa standards, even before we put this in place, we're seeing more structured parking. We haven't seen it with retail, those have all been pretty small projects. In some of our discussions with potential builders, we are seeing structured parking associated with retail. So I think as our land values go up and to make moderate to larger-size projects make sense, where you're getting enough value for the land to go through the cost and effort of redeveloping, structured parking is likely. But that is, that is still, we're recommending encouraged, which, you're right, there is a risk there.
So could it not be something like the recommendation for office? So for retail, if it's over a certain amount, a certain size, then some sort of structured parking at some percentage would be required?
Yes, I don't think we felt like we had enough numbers to give us the same level of confidence in establishing that.
What would it take to get those numbers?
So retail is a much harder thing, you know, the, as Lucy mentioned, you know, even the tolerances on office, how many office projects we had to pick from, to look for, what is the tolerance level for structured parking? Retail's way different. And so I know the concern that you're expressing, and that is, and it's the one-offs, you know, when we're talking about bigger projects like the Commons redeveloping or with a vertical mixed-use project coming, that will come with structured parking. It's the, what about the small remnant parcels that are maybe on East Lake Simamish?
How do you know that's going to come with structured parking? You don't require it.
Because the only way that you can fit additional development, say on a fully-developed parcel like the Commons, would be to add structured parking because you're taking surface parking lots to build buildings. With any standalone vertical mixed-use project, you know, you will, to accommodate the required parking for all that density, it needs to be in a structure. You just, nobody would build a big surface parking lot with a five over one or five over two. So it's the small stuff. It's the, could we get another car dealer, a car parts store, or a, you know, a fast-food restaurant? Yes, we could. And I think if we were going to go down that path of saying, how would we address retail and those standalones, I think, you know, we would want to bring in, probably a retail consultant to help us understand that.
So in your packets, Eco Northwest, and I can reference the page if you're interested, but they had a kind of interesting discussion about, so they're, you know, they're, they talk about between 25 and 50 percent is where the infeasibility happens. But the model that they were using was based on 25,000 square feet of retail. And, you know, we're seeing projects like, you know, the Taco Time Project or the Corner Bakery, those are significantly smaller than that. And so to get to the economy of scale where you can build it is larger than most of the projects that we've had. And then to factor in the kinds of, the differences in the market between the number of projects that we have to look at for office versus the retail, which are all these small ones that aren't doing it, is where we're really hesitant because retail is such an important part of our community and our character. We know it's a high priority, but I think we're just, to avoid the unintended consequences, we just feel we aren't quite there to make that recommendation yet.
Thank you for having this slide up. I want to ask something about office. So when it says between 25 percent and 50 percent structured parking in office projects becomes infeasible, that tells me, that's a pretty wide range, by the way.
Right.
That would tell me that some pro formas say, hey, 26 percent, doesn't work. And so to go all the way to 50 percent with a recommendation, seems like we're pushing up against most projects not being feasible, if I interpret the word that's on there.
So one of the things that Eco Northwest pointed out is, they are, of course, basing it on all the information that they've collected locally. And there are a number of variables, construction type, you know, the size of the site, the type of the soils, you know, all those many factors that we see. And I think the, so part of what they pointed out was that there was a validity in then also looking at the projects that we're seeing on the ground as a way of sort of balancing their model against the realities of Isqwa. I mean, that's one of the challenges with looking at other jurisdictions and other projects in attempting to, you know, pick up code or judge from that, there are so many variables. And so what they're essentially, I think, saying is, there's this wide range, and when we look at projects in Isqwa, what we're seeing is, you know, based on historical information of the projects that have built, is that they're coming out at an average of 45 percent. And so while I understand your concern, and that's why we started at a 33 percent conservative position, the commission was hoping for a more aspirational number, which is not unlike some of the, or many of the projects that we saw.
To make sure I understand, when we're saying 25 percent or whatever these percentages, we're saying that the parking requirement or the total number of stalls that a project is going to require, they require 150, 50 percent are going to minimally have to be instructured? We actually would think that someone would do a mix?
So typically, there is a mix, at least some, because, you know, you have your convenience drop-offs, you have like places where people want to pull right up to the front, go in and do something really fast and come out, whereas employees, they can tuck into a garage. You know, when you look at the office that's happened recently, so we have an application in now for Costco, it's going to be 100 percent in garage. The office building that was built on Fourth, which is a medical office building, it's got, it's all in garage, well, it's got a little bit out on surface, but most of it's in garage. The Gilman Lofts project that you guys just approved through a development agreement, it's all tucked under, so it's considered structured. So when you look at, and there's also a component with office that, you know, if you're trying to really, if you say, well, you know, we don't have that much office getting built in Isqwa period, and that that is getting built, you know, if you want it to be, you know, Class A office, it's going to be structured parked. That's just part of the requirement from BOMA. It's part of the definition of Class A is it has structured parking. So I'm not, you know, again, I think whether you go 30 or 50, I think either way, Isqwa is going beyond our peer jurisdictions in terms of what we're asking developers to do, which is great. Whether you want to take a more conservative approach or a more aspirational approach or something in between, I think there's not a right answer here. I don't think that if...
There's not a right answer?
I don't think there's, I don't think there's an answer, at least within the range that you guys are talking about, that would cause developers to stop. If you go beyond 50, I think that that could be the case. People would choose to build either outside Central Isqwa or build other land uses that aren't falling into this requirement.
Okay. That's an interesting analysis. It does make me question the value of Eco Northwest's analysis. If they're saying between 25 and 50, it becomes unfeasible, and we're not seeing any of that, it does make me question that entire analysis. My other point would be retail. Lucy, I think you characterized the administration's initial proposals at 33 percent as like incremental or, I forget how you characterize that.
Well, I said it was conservative and that we could treat it incrementally where, for instance, every three years as we do our monitoring.
So why not do that with retail?
Because we're less confident of that number. I know you're not as confident of, I mean, you've just communicated your concerns about office, but I think we felt that there was, there was less on-the-ground information to back up the range that they were showing between 25 and 50 percent.
Okay, thank you. And to be perfectly clear, my uncertainty has to do, we have an analysis that says one thing, we have data from the field that says another, and we're leaning toward the data on the field. That's what I'm questioning, the value of the analysis we have.
I think Eco Northwest is a respected company and we're not, I think that, I think one of the things that we said to PPC, and I think it is one of the challenges, they are a rather data-driven body and would have liked to have a very specific number. And I think what we're trying to get a sense of is the ballpark. This is a, something of an art and not a science. And so I'm not sure that even if we had had a significantly larger contract with Eco Northwest, that they would have been able to say 33 percent is perfect, 35 percent is not perfect. So I think that we're using a number of factors to try and get us in that ballpark, but because we are a leader in the region on this, I think that we are having to, sorry, we're trying to make an educated guess.
Okay, and I'll just summarize, it does feel like guesswork? And I don't know that we can do any better than that right now?
Questions? You ready for public comment? Public comment time? You have to sing it like that too, if you're going to talk. No, I'm just kidding.
Hi, Steve Pereira. So I guess this conservative versus aspirational concept is really kind of at the core, and these two things really banging heads here. It seems it's easier to decide upfront what we want to be and grow as a city versus later try to redevelopment to try to become the city that we want to become. So I guess I lean towards two things. One is, in studies I've seen, we're not going to be, we're a couple of years out from meeting at the price value where we get structured parking. And the fact that I heard today was that the soil type being different in Isqwa, value is different than other places, it seems easier to say wait and put an aspirational goal on development. And so why not go towards the 100 percent now before we build out and have strip parking, strip structures? It's easier to say that now and put that aspirational goal and build towards that aspirational goal with policy that allows us to have it. If we don't get it in this construction cycle, 11 miles from Seattle, we're going to get that, why are we rushing it to make that wait? The other thing, another thing anyway that seems relevant is, when we're looking at the moratorium, one of the things we saw that caused us to put it in place was not having, I guess, we tried to get development and it was happening outside of the CIP. And another thing seems to be happening here that maybe we could put zoning height and restrictions aren't part of the moratorium, and I think zoning height needs to be part of the moratorium conversation, and maybe downzone other places so we restrict the sprawl needs to be part of that conversation as well. And I also think that there does need to be some retail structured parking considered as part of this. If that means we need more fine-tuned numbers, then we need to have part of that, otherwise we're not going to get it where we need it, and we're going to have people parking in residential zones or other places. If it doesn't come as part of this, if the structure is too small, maybe they pay some additional funds into a kitty that gets used to build structured parking, not just having sprawl of existing smaller construction sites. Thanks.
Honey?
So I interrupted Lucy to, sorry Lucy, because I actually wanted to see the exact language of what these people were asked to do. And they were asked to tell you about the feasibility of structured parking right now. And our CIP is a long document. And the whole reason you had the moratorium was because you didn't like what was happening right now. And so if you, if they are saying, these are the, these are the percentages that would allow people to do basically the same thing that they're doing right now, well, we don't like what's happening right now. And so what we want to do is get what we envisioned, which means that you would raise those percentages even if it takes a few years because we want a different Isqwa, we don't want a strip mall Isqwa. And so when people say aspirational, you know, I sort of want to just spit, because what does that really even mean? because what does that really even mean, and it's such a good word to spit on? But, um, if you look at our goals for the Central Issaquah Plan, it is clear that we are envisioning something different. So, I think you must go with a higher percentage, even at the cost of saying no, because we are terrible at saying no to things, even if we don't like them, we just say yes. Now, Steve had a, of course, if we say no in the Central Issaquah area, and we say yes everywhere else, then we are still not getting what we want. And that conversation has still not happened within council. So, with this moratorium, uh, you do have a magic moment with council to start saying, "How are we going to deal with strategically creating the Central Issaquah area that we want without just having a donut hole and the rest of town gross?" And that is a conspicuous absence in your policy planning. And so, yes, I realize that is outside of, of poor Lucy's presentation, but I think the core of what Paul was saying is, "No, we don't want what you can do now. We want better than that, and the community expects you to go for better and put the rules in place to make it so." Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Many members? Vince?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, some of these comments provoked a, a question for me. The, Lucy, you said it was a year ago that we gave the report card that started all of this. How many office projects, if there were six that we could look at for the basis of this analysis, and residential, there were fourteen, and retail, there were four today, what was it a year ago? What, 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 what has changed? What would those numbers have looked like a year ago? Do we know? And maybe not just the count of the projects, but what type, what pers- we probably weren't calculating. I don't know if you have your- It was twelve across all types?
This is, this is in the city. These are not limited to Central Issaquah. So, for instance, residential projects are probably evenly split, or close to evenly split, between our urban village and, uh, or Isquah Highlands and Central Isquah. There, I think there was one project that was outside of either of those areas. Um, retail was, um, I have a, uh, retail had, uh, one project that was before Central Isquah, uh, two projects from Central Isquah, and one from the urban villages. Um, office, uh, one of the projects is, so one of the office projects was under Central Isquah. Some of the other ones are, two of them are in the urban villages, and several of them, one was Old Town, and the other ones were prior to Central Isquah. So, we were looking over a range of years and a range of areas to try and, um, look at what was happening in Issaquah, not just in Central Isquah. So, I, I, um, you know, if we go back and look, there, there were seven non-residential projects. That would have been a combination of office and retail, and only one of those, which was the storage building, um, had any structured parking. And of the residential projects, which of course were all under Central Isquah, all of them had some portion. And actually, I think if, if I look at them, um, they ranged from about thirty percent with Gateway Senior, that was the lowest one. Gateway was the second at about thirty-five, and then they ranged all the way up to a hundred percent, um, in, um, Central Isquah.
So, um, office?
Yes.
Of the six projects looked at, average in structured parking was forty-three percent of the parking was in structured parking.
Right. So, of, of the, um, six projects, uh, three of them did not have any structured parking. Uh, one of those is a fairly large building, the other two would have fallen outside below this five thousand square foot threshold. Um, so, I don't, I didn't do that calcu- I did a calculation for how much the percentage of structured parking for the projects that were structured, but not for the projects that, um, would have been above five thousand. That would have made sense, but I didn't think of that.
The recommendation would be to up at fifty per, seven percent, basically from the median, fifty percent.
Seventeen percent.
Well, from forty-three.
Oh, 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 I see. I'm sorry.
Forty, what did I say?
You said, you said the right thing. I was going from thirty-three to fifty instead of forty-three to fifty.
Um, I'm uncomfortable, I guess I'm uncomfortable with retail. Um, that just seems to not get us where we're trying to go. Um, I don't know what the answer is, because we're told we don't have the data, the information we need, so I don't know what that means unless we grab some number, but-
So, so if you think, so retail, just, we can spend a few minutes and see if you guys get comfortable, or you can handle the other two, and then we can end in retail. I mean, so, think about retail and how you shop, and right now, you know, where, where do you have retail experiences with structured parking? So, Grand Ridge Plaza, so fairly big, L Square, um, any of the other malls, you know, there's structured parking, but most of the retail experiences we all have, we go to Target, we go to, you know, Trader Joe's, we do these things, they're surface parked right now. And so, what we don't have a comfort level with is by mandating some structured parking with retail, what does that do to our retail market? And our retail market is, um, obviously important to the economic vitality of our community, and so, that one is, seems perilous, um, without having more information to make a good decision. I think the likelihood that we could have an unintended consequence with retail is a lot bigger than the other two land uses.
Well, or you put a number on it, you, you put a requirement on it now that's, you know, somewhere between twenty-five and fifty percent, and it, if it has the effect of slowing while you study that further, you know, I mean, we have choices.
What could go wrong?
Yeah. But, so, um, I don't know that it needs to be zero, between zero and a hundred, and I don't know if it's a, um, uh, you know, I think what, what we heard in, what Steve said, you know, why, why rush to get what we don't want? I mean, that's, that's where my heartburn is.
So, um, and of course, I found it the first time. Um, you know, I think that the, that what Eco Northwest was saying was that, and it's on page ninety-eight in your packets, um, was that what they were evaluating, uh, for the twenty-five to fifty percent, that where that came from was a twenty-five thousand square foot retail space. Um, and then the projects that we're looking at, um, you know, only two of them fell above that. Um, one was Grand Ridge Plaza, which had about twenty-five percent structured parking, and then Overlake had about twelve percent structured parking.
So, I think there are things with that, um, I think there are things that we can probably do to, you know, maybe it's retail over a certain size.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, again, this is one of those things where this is not my, this is not my wheelhouse, this is not my profession, and so, I'm equally as uncomfortable just, you know, creating language that sounds reasonable to me, when I don't have the, the information that I need to make that decision.
Just a question.
Sure.
So, what's wrong with going back to Eco Northwest and saying council wants to know what could go wrong if they picked a fifty percent requirement for retail over twenty-five thousand?
Eco Northwest is not a retail expert, and so, I wouldn't use them.
Yeah.
You know, there are companies like Real Retail that would be a better, um, measure for that. You know, I guess I would say that this, this was debated for a long time at PPC, um, and I think at the end of the day, they felt uncomfortable, I think your staff is uncomfortable, um, putting a number on retail, um, because I think that it will have some unintended consequences. And, you know, obviously, the council can do what they want to do, but the recommendation coming both from PPC and the administration is zero for retail.
Are there other places in the Puget Sound region, other jurisdictions that require structured parking to some degree on retail of certain size perhaps, or?
So, not in that way. So, right now, so, there is a structured parking requirement, I believe, of some sort coming out of Spring District. Um, but, right now, Federal Way has had proposed legislation that is still pending and doesn't seem to be moving.
And that's just, that's only for multifamily, Federal Way.
Spring District was supposed to be our big competition.
Who was?
Spring District in Bellevue. So, maybe we need to find out what we're doing.
Well, just a, a question too. So, we've had some small retail projects redeveloped, and I have to say, I actually think the work that you did with Corner Bakery and McDonald's to incorporate, and Taco Time, is that the other one? To incorporate some of those elements of site design, and I, I think they're good, I think it worked. I guess I'm kinda stuck in this place is that we're not gonna, from what Steve said, we're not gonna go from where we are to, you know, something really quickly that is, that looks exactly like the stuff that's at the end of the Central Isquah Plan. So, I'm, I'm sort of stuck in the place of, if we can put something in that still allows the smaller retails to go ahead and, and get their permits and do their upgrades, great. Um, I'm kinda still shell-shocked by what's happened over the first three years, and, and I'm, I'm not convinced that being aspirational is a bad thing. We, we could just be aspirational for a year, and you could ask us for more money to go out and do a retail study. Like, I'm not, I'm not sure, when I look at what, what I think we've lost in terms of opportunity in Central Issaquah, I'm not sure I convinced, I wanna leave something that loose again, because I think we've not done, or, or not allowed it to develop in a way that the community thought it was gonna develop. So, I'm kinda leaning on the side, put something in there, um, based on larger stores, and they have to provide that much structured parking, and we'll look at it in a year. And if you need money to fine-tune that number, then ask for it in the budget cycle. I'm pretty gun-shy right now, so, I'm kind of, even though staff and PPC is saying they don't have enough information, I'm just looking down the road and saying, "We're gonna, some of this retail is gonna redo itself a couple of times, at least once maybe, before we get maybe the look we're looking for." So, I'm just, I don't know, I'm not feeling the zero. I'm going there.
What number, what number? Where, where would you go? Do you have a-
I think, um, if, based on the kind of stock that has been coming in, the projects that you're looking at that are coming in, if they're not hitting the twenty-five thousand mark, and, and you're not thinking that we have, we're gonna get out of this moratorium, and people are gonna go, "Ick, look what they just did," then, then let's start with the larger store, let's start with the twenty-five thousand. It just, I just, I don't want any more unintended, I don't want any more improvements, I guess, is where I'm going with it. So, I just don't feel like leaving anything loose.
Goal is avoid unintended consequences, and, um, we've had a lot of them. And so, I'm not super concerned about unintended consequence of someone developing elsewhere right now, because we asked for, we require what we want. That's, um, I think, yeah, that's-
So, where are we, are we on the other, office and residential? The fifty-fifty?
I like the fifty percent, fifty fifty.
Do we, either of you have questions about that?
No, I like PPC. And actually, I'd just like to make a comment, that it sounds, meaning sounds like it was long at PPC and involved, and I probably won't get a chance to watch it, but it sounds impressive. It sounds like they really dug down, and they really were trying to listen to what the community has said about the moratorium and what we've built. That's awesome. That is really good.
Well, and it's the kind of co- conversation that when you are trying to lead something, that you're talking about how do you, what are the criteria you're using to make a community decision, and that's that, you know, conservative versus aspirational, incremental versus big steps. I mean, um, that's the kind of conversation that, um, needed to happen.
I would, I would propose that we have to put it in.
I'm sorry?
I would propose that we have to put in some sort of percentage for retail, and that it should be related to a square footage for the-
So, then the question is, um, do we come up with that now, or do we ask this to come, this to come back?
I guess, uh, for staff to come back with it, they've already kind of got a recommendation, and without any more data, or any more dollars to ask questions of experts, what would you come back with that's different than what you have?
Nothing. So, I mean, you know, so, there's, there's two variables that you guys are debating on retail. It's how big is the building that would be exempt, and then what's the percentage of required structured parking? Um, so, you know, I think that that's a whole kind of spin-off work project in and of itself, that we would ask you guys for a budget appropriation for 2018, I mean, if, if that's what you want to do.
So-
You wouldn't come back with a different number, but council putting in that recommendation would generate a project with some budget ask. Okay, fair enough.
So, um, just to get it started, twenty-five thousand square feet, fifty percent?
Stab in the dark, I haven't heard staff say, you know, there, "You wanna kill retail, do this." And, and, and that's probably the wrong way to, to phrase it, but that, and because it assumes that you just, you know, that, you know, now is the time. Um, I haven't, you haven't said anything that you said will absolutely, you know, create economic, you know, dead zone.
Stagnation?
Stagnation, or dead zone, just, okay, you just-
This will, this will do it.
So, what'll happen?
Don't forget, we can always, remember, when we passed the Central Issaquah Plan, it was, "Oh, but we can, we can work on it, we can change the code, and so, we could do the same thing."
So-
Put something in here, and then we come, and then we study it, and in a year, if you want us to change it, and-
So, what would happen is most, and I'm just, I don't have a crystal ball, right? But what would happen is, whatever you set that number at, twenty-five thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet, somebody wanting to build something will pick a thousand square feet less than that, and not do the structured parking. That's, that's what will happen. The market will drive that decision.
So, you could say that about any square footage we-
Yes.
-pick. And so, that's exactly what happened, what's going on in the office one, too. Someone's gonna pick five thousand square feet instead of five thousand one.
They might.
So, I don't understand why it's, I don't understand why it's such a rate of horribles with retail.
Well, because I think with offices, we are, we've seen projects that when it was voluntary, were, were doing this. And so, um, we, that, not every project did it, so there are small projects that are not doing it. There are, you know, last-century projects that are not doing it. Um, you know, probably Proliance up at, um, we didn't evaluate Swedish, that's too complicated, because it's MOB and hospital. Um, and so, there are certain uses we aren't involved with in this. Um, but Proliance is probably the biggest building that didn't provide any structured parking, and I think, we all think that would probably have been better if it, you know, did have that. And it's a fifty thousand square foot building. So, I think that, um, what we, what we're seeing is that we have some, we have both Eco Northwest data, and on, boots-on-the-ground and Issaquah data, that make us feel more comfortable making that recommendation than we would with retail. And I understand your concern, um, and, but that's just why we have less certainty about that.
What's the size of a twenty-five, so, give me an example of a twenty-five thousand square foot retail store.
So, here's, here's a great example, right? So, this is why this is, this is the unintended consequence- So this is why this is, this is the unintended consequences. So Front Street Market is empty. It's about, it's probably about, hey Jen, how many square feet's Front Street?
14,000.
Oh, 14. So let's assume that somebody wants to come in and take over Front Street Market, a new grocery store. And for them, because they're a new grocery store, they want to do an addition on the front and it takes it to 20,000. So now they have to do 50% structured parking.
This is citywide parking?
Well, good point. So, but if it was in Central Issaquah. So let's take Sports Authority.
Yes.
Okay? So Sports, how many square feet is Sports?
40,000.
40,000.
So that's 40, okay? So if somebody came in and wanted to do some revisions on Sports Authority that would add some square footage, now they have to do half of their parking as structured and that is, parking for retail is four per thousand?
I think so. So four per thousand? I think that's the maximum. So required parking, the minimum required is two per thousand. So one per thousand would have to be structured.
You have to have a 40 stall parking garage.
Okay.
Still not seeing the downside.
Yeah, not seeing it.
Go on then.
Okay.
I think perhaps there's a dual hats thing here, DSD and ED. And we're coming at it.
I'm only wearing one, okay?
So, yeah, so I would.
I'm definitely talking with my ED hat on, just in case you guys are confused.
For sure. I still have the letters ED on your hat.
So the only way I would be comfortable moving forward is to add some sort of a percentage and minimum square footage on the retail and then.
With the caveat that we look at it in the next year and see if we hit the sweet spot.
That, well, that, you know, that's a budget question.
Right.
But also it doesn't have to have the council's approval. The mayor has authority to execute contracts for up to $50,000 to do this kind of work. So it doesn't actually, you know, have to come through budget. But I, I just. Comfortable. We've played the game now for four years and not, don't want to play that game anymore.
So what's gonna make you comfortable? What do you need to see?
Well, the only one that sticks up, sticks in my mind is the 25,000 square feet and 50%. And because I don't know any different, that's the number that Eco Northwest looked at. You're, you know, you keep tossing out 50% or somebody is, and so that's the recommendation. And so I don't know any different.
So if we're gonna use those numbers just for discussion purposes, and I know you're thinking aspirational and that would be 50%, the somewhat more conservative would be to stick with the 25% and 25,000. Because at that, that was, they were showing that it's between 25 and 50, so 25%.
That makes sense. So, comments?
I feel like we're just operating with a lot of big gaps of information.
Yep.
Retail, someone has to put in structure and their customers. We talked about housing and whether or not the housing units have to subsidize. If as long as we don't, parking is free, the housing units have to subsidize the parking. What subsidizes the structured parking for retail? Well, there's even, it's probably even easier for customers to park elsewhere, especially in central area because there's so much parking right now. So that would, that's a concern of mine that you, that. It's like we're really focusing on one small thing, but I think there's a larger context that we don't, we still don't understand the forces at play. And I gotta say as well too, this whole parking thing for the moratorium, it looks like it's coming down to going from voluntary to 50% for office, 50% for residential, onshore about retail. So that's the entire parking element of the moratorium.
But no change in the standards in terms of how much parking is required, it's just whether it's in structure.
Right, right. This is just about structured, okay, so.
And so?
This is, this is, it feels like a bit of guesswork. And I can accept the recommendations where they are for office and residential.
Do we do something tonight or punt it back? I gotta just close the door on this and.
So I, I would be comfortable adding 25,000 square feet and 50% and recommending that to the full council. And then there may, staff administration may have comments between now and full council. I'm planning on reading all the information again to see if I can glean anything else that might help me. I'm also going to look at some other jurisdictions. I guess I'll have to go do my own homework and find out if what I can about the Spring District and see if there's something else that feels more comfortable to me. I, you know, I made a commitment a year ago to work as hard as we needed to work to get the moratorium lifted. So I'm willing to put more work into it without just punting it back because I know the information that I want to try to get. But I'm not comfortable with the recommendation of C. But my feeling about what C retail could be or should be might change. This is just sort of a yes, 25,000 and 50%, 50%.
I could support you on that.
All right, so let's run it up the flagpole.
One more comment, not related to the number.
And I would think that maybe, hoping that staff would help with that more information gathering. Anyway.
In terms of code?
To see if maybe.
Spring District.
Yeah.
Yeah, see if 25 and 50 is, you know, those need to be changed for good reasons.
So last comment has to do with something that Connie had mentioned. And that is that I believe this is our opportunity to move in a different direction with the Central Issaquah Plan and its code and make sure that we actually get the product that we expect to get. The second piece to this goes back to a land insurance question from last year. And that is that we know that in terms of growth of residential units, that we are seeing as much growth outside of Central Issaquah as we are inside of Central Issaquah. Some of the things that we're gonna propose in these work items may have the unintended consequence, a gain of making land outside of Central Issaquah more desirable. That goes completely against our comp plan vision of focusing growth here, completely against it. So the piece of information that I asked for last year that I don't think we've seen is, you had come up with a figure that heads out, even though we meet our growth management target in 2018 approximately for residential units, we still have the capacity to build 11,000 or 11,000 more housing units. Haven't ever talked about where those are. And for me, for each of these moratorium items, if what we're doing is tightening up this code and in the end, we end up building the donut, I don't know if it was Connie or Steve or somebody talked about, we've made a mistake again. So in order for me to get through this, I have to know where that capacity is and that, and when we get out of this moratorium, we act on whatever other land issues we have to so that we don't push the growth out to the fringes again. Talking about things like requests up in the Highlands for upzoning, requests down a state route 900 for changing land use. That's happening anyway before we do this and this could just make it worse. And so while I think this might get us the product 50 years that we want in Central Issaquah, we may see the donut grow up first and that would be travesty. I need that piece in order to actually vote on stuff like this. Get us out of the moratorium. Thanks, Keith.
I'm gonna add a couple of comments. And I misspoke earlier as far as the changes that we, it's not just adding these percentage minimum requirements for, there are actual amendment and it's in the packet as well. So including, so there's language, there's proposed amendments, rationale, recommendation that came from PPC that had to do, for example, with the, no administrative adjustment may be made to reduce the required provision for structured parking, like adding that, for example. There's a couple of language changes like that. They're on page 57 of the packet. There's another one, amend the definition of parking, the structure to clarify, the carport is not considered structured parking. Add a new definition of carport. So these are part of, these are part of it as well. And then there's a third one, which is just the. All residential uses and office uses over 5,000 gross feet, square feet to use structured parking to meet a portion of the minimum parking requirement and to establish, okay, that's the one that actually adjusts. It says, I mean, this is the language we've been talking about. It's the third amendment that actually addresses what we've been discussing. There are these other changes.
Right. And we didn't focus on that. I mean, it is part of our recommendations page that there were no exemptions in terms of certain uses that were excluded. That was in our memo also, that for instance, affordable housing isn't excluded from that. And in terms of adjustments, I think the message that we have gotten from council is if this is our expectation, this is our expectation. And so it was added to the list where it is not available for adjustment. Now, that is contrary to what Eco Northwest recommended. They recommended a variance process, which would, you know, adjustment is if you have a better way to get there. Variance is hardship. And we discussed that and felt that that was not really what we were hearing from council and PPC and the community. And so we did not establish that or propose that.
So are we all in agreement to move this forward with the recommendation with what we discussed? Okay?
Consent.
But a special, a separate special meeting.
I think there may be something later on the agenda we can do eventually.
Which time we can just keep swinging.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Agenda Bill 7433, Annexation of King County Island and Establishment of Pre-Annexation Zoning. Trish Heineman?
Yes.
City Policy Manager.
Okay. You have two annexations before you tonight. The first one is the King County Island potential annexation area. And tonight, we want to go over the schedule, review some of the specifics on this parcel, talk about the proposed pre-annexation zoning. I have a committee discussion. I think there'll probably be some audience comments tonight related to this issue and then we'll talk about the next steps. The process timeline for both annexations, you met on June 5th on this Agenda Bill. You passed a resolution of intent to annex. We set two public hearing dates for the pre-annexation zoning, two, 30 days apart. And you all asked for additional information to be presented in the packet for tonight. And that's in your packet and that was existing zoning, proposed zoning, what community facilities, zones included, some different topo maps. So those are all in your packet tonight. On June 6th, the day after you did the resolution to move forward, we finalized our submittal to the State Boundary Review Board. They should be done with their review July 14th, which is the 45-day timeline that they have. Tonight, July 6th is your reviewing this before it goes July 17th to the first of the two public hearings on the proposed pre-annexation zoning. The next one then is September 5th, which if you're comfortable with everything, then you can not only make your decision on the pre-annexation zoning, but you can also make your decision on whether to annex the parcel or not. Are there questions on the schedule? And as you heard from Jen previously, the September 5th timeline fits really well with the TOD timeline for their grant application. This is the parcel. It's over by our King, our shop site.
Excuse me, excuse me, you just said parcel.
Yes.
I want to make something clear. There are multiple parcels here. It's just all in on Incorporated King County right now.
Right, right. It's better called an island because it's three parcels and a part of a parcel that's already in the city.
So even though, even though there's way more than three listed and this table is in our packet as well.
Right. There are one, two, three, four, four parcels, right of way that's not considered a parcel and part of a parcel that's already in the city.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a plethora of pieces in the parcel.
It's a piece of land.
The big piece that we find out, we just closed on is zoned mineral. The washed out parcels are different sorts of residential, which I thought was very interesting. And the little teeny piece of the Burgess property is considered intensive commercial. Are there questions on existing zoning? And the whole, we don't zone right of way. So the part to the west of the yellow, even though that's in this island, it doesn't get zoning because it's right of way. And those are stormwater ponds. Questions on existing zoning? Proposed zoning, and we're not completely sure with how it all is, where the dashed lines go on the parcel that we just purchased. The bottom part would be intensive commercial so that we could move Century Link. The middle portion, which is the slope, would be community facilities, open space. And as you know, we're still working with the school district to try and figure out the smallest possible parcel to which they could put the urban elementary school. So that boundary line is fluid so far. We still haven't quite figured out what that line is, but we're working together to figure out what the smallest site would be. Are there any questions on, oh, and all the washed out parcels would be community facilities, facilities. We don't want them to be residential.
I want to go back here. Again, you just said we just purchased a parcel.
The King County Road site.
So, and that, and so which one on this map is it?
It's easier to show you on this, it's the blue one. And it has at the bottom, you can sort of see the shadow where the shop site is now with the big loop-de-loop and the big shed with parking. But they own, they used to own all of the blue.
So that's what we purchased and yet for the entire island, this is zoning for the entire island even though we just own one parcel?
Right, right. We would like to put pre-annexation zoning on all of it, even the land that we do not own. Which is customary when you do annexation like with South Cove, with Clahani, that we didn't get. But we put pre-annexation zoning on it so that when they came in, it would have the zoning that we wanted instead of comparable zoning.
So flip to your next map. So what, you are proposing zoning, you're actually splitting certain parcels into multiple type zones?
Again, we're trying to stay on our parcel, it's just the way that the map is drawn, but.
So we would process a short plat along concurrently with the zoning and the annexation so that it would actually create three parcels potentially. Assuming the council wants to zone that upper parcel of our new property, CFF. That's still a conversation point in the process. So if not, we could create two. So at the end of the day, the IC parcel, to create an IC parcel at the bottom, which can then be part of the conversation about TOD and giving that to Spectrum, to give to Century Link, you know, so that needs to be its own parcel. And then we've talked about at least having a forested hillside that's part of Mountains to Sound, so that's CFOS. And then if the council wants to keep the top of the property forested, you could just do basically two parcels and make the whole thing at the, from the middle to the top, CFOS. If on the other hand, the council wants to create the opportunity for a school site up at the top, then you would want to create three parcels and that top one would then be zoned CFF. Hopefully that helped. And I think what Trish was saying is that rectangle right now that says CFF, that likely does not represent the dimensions of the property if at the end of the day, you guys feel like that could be a school site. It would be smaller than that, I believe.
Right.
That's something we're working with ISD on right now.
You said the plating would be done concurrently with what?
With the annexation process. So right now, so we own the property. So we can do, basically start working on the plating. And then once it's in our jurisdiction, then the short plat can actually occur without having to go ask King County to do the permitting.
So the annexation would actually occur first?
Right.
Because, because the, the plat doesn't have anything to do with the annexation process?
Right.
Right. Officially, it would have to happen first, but since we would own it.
No annexation.
Annexation first, but behind the scenes, we would know what we would hope for, for the short plat.
Um...
Any more? Oh, keep going.
Can you go back one slide, please?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the wash dots that are residential that you're proposing to be CFF?
Yes.
They're not CFO?
Because it's the state, and they are talking about maybe there might be some facilities there, like either a stormwater or water reservoir or something like that, and they weren't in favor of, of it being open space?
If I, the other, the, the first item we discussed this, this evening, the, I think we call it the property. Oh wait, what was it called in your, your packet?
The TOD?
Replacement Property?
We look at you.
Yes. So go back to the picture.
Oh, it's harder to see.
Shows, it show, it would be very helpful to see an overlay, and I realize, so, so thank you for the numerous maps that you put in. We have a couple, I'm not sure what the red one is, the light are, I'm not sure what I learned from that. I certainly see the, the topographic map, and I, and you, we can see what's steep and what isn't. There's also the letter from the school district, which draws a seven acre, roughly a seven acre box as well. And, and this idea of zoning, we, you know, the administration is laying out potential uses, different uses for this parcel, and it's, I think we're very close to being able to imagine what that would look, what the proposal would look at, like at potential build-out. It would be great to have that kind of overlaid, especially on the, so you could see, you know, you know, does it fit within the, the flatland that's there right now? Does any of this have to get into steep slope where there's forest today, and also the school part, potential school part on the top? How much of that, and this might be premature, but I would try to understand is that if that, if, 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 if we zoned it CFF and then did this short plat, and then followed through with the school district, would like to know what, what we think, the impact in terms of what would be developed, what, what trees would have to come down, how much soil, roughly, are we talking, how much flattening needs to go out? We just had a big conversation about that on Bergsma, of how much, how much material was going to leave the site, and that, that raised a lot of concerns. And, and I know it's all very early right now, but I would like to have a better idea of at, from what, all the uses that you are putting on the table for us to consider, what would it look like on this land that is ours today?
So I can, I'll address the relocation site for Century Link at the bottom, so it is not going to go into the, the steep slope. We remained within the area that they are currently using, and so, so where you see kind of that roundabout road is approximately, and so it's about a three-acre site. So we actually, you know, had a, had the survey, and that's the, that's the work that our development partners are working off of, and that Century Link is aware of and sees, you know, again, in concept plan that can fit on that. So, there's no going in and, you know, into the steep slope at all for the Century Link. There's, you know, again, we'll, we'll gather more information about the upper side.
You'll get more information...
We can have a further conversation about the, about the CFF site, so I don't know that we have all the details of how much dirt is going to be moved and et cetera, so that, but I'm just saying for right now, I know the answer to that for the relocation of Century, the potential relocation of Century Link.
So, before we get to the hearing, you know, the map that you asked for showing the three parcels as proposed, we can do that map.
Right, before the 17th.
Can you talk a little bit about the, the code proposal that's going to come forward regarding urban schools and...
That's going to public hearing next week at PPC?
Now, would that affect this site?
If it's approved.
Okay. So, um, isn't, wouldn't that need to be approved? I mean, is this cart before the horse?
No.
Why?
Because that's a citywide change, and there's a process associated with evaluating that. You know, at the end of the day, you guys, you guys can decide either CFF or not CFF here. Even if you decide CFF, you could wait and decide what happens with that code amendment to influence whether or not you decide to sell that property to the school district. Because it's CFF doesn't mean you've automatically made that decision to sell it to the school district. That's a whole other process.
Right, and leaving it, having it be, having it be CFO, you can change it to CFF later.
I guess my question was, what could go wrong with, with CFF now? Learn more about what urban schools look like, what their purpose look like, learn what a proposal might look like, and consider a change to CFF.
So, um, so, so you could do that. That's obviously a choice, and I think the school district would have some, want to weigh in on that, if that is ultimately where the committee thinks they would like to go. I think if you think that this is a valid school site, I don't want to say that seems disingenuous to go ahead and zone it OS now and then do it F later. It seems like if you today feel like this could be a good spot for school, then let's get you the information that you need to feel comfortable that that's the right zone to put on this piece of property. And so I guess, we can do it either way. You know, you, you guys can choose to go down either path, but if part of your hesitation about F is issues about building heights, we've already flown a balloon from the top of the property at 60 feet to see if it was, where it would be visible from, so we have some of that data that we can give you, help you either feel comfortable or not. Paul has mentioned trees. I think we can talk about if that code amendment goes through as proposed, you know, what would that do to the trees on that site, and how much would be retained. As the property owner, you also have the ability to make some other stipulations when you sell that property, so if there's certain pieces of the code that you don't like, potentially put restrictions on that as part of the sale of the property. So, there's, I mean, there's ways to get at maybe the concerns that you might be having about that, but you have the choice.
Just a follow-up question to that. So, um, it's not what it's finally going to end up being, whether it's a school site or something else. I don't think our council's particularly, at this point, and tonight in particular, familiar with how to site schools, or, you know, this parcel might be available, but if you're looking at the city as a whole, is this the right location? Is this, I, I know that people can talk to it, but it, oh, it feels like we're being asked tonight to make a decision that could come back in two years, that says, well, you already went down the path, you know, council already decided it's CFF, and so that was the first step towards making a school site. I feel like I have no idea, and I don't know tonight that I can get enough information to say, and so...
And I don't think you need to do that tonight. I think part of what the ask is, you know, and Trish, let me know if I'm wrong, so, so things are happening at the BRB right now in terms of the donut hole, multiple parcels. And I think at some point, you guys are going to have to make a decision about our property, and whether it's two parcels or three parcels, and how it's zoned. That doesn't happen tonight. That doesn't happen, I think even, I mean...
Until September 5th, is the second public hearing on the pre-annexation zoning. So you have until then to gather information, ask us for information, because the first hearing is the 17th of July, I believe, and the, and the second of two is September 5th, so that's when you would have to, if you chose to, set the pre-annexation zoning for all the parcels, and choose whether or not to annex the whole property to the city. So there's still time. Tonight was just a work session to get you more familiar with the parcels before the first public hearing on the pre-annexation zoning.
No, actually, tonight was for action on whether we, whether we are recommending, whether we want to recommend to the full council that we, that we, what zoning we want on the parcels. That's what the, it wasn't, it's not a work session, it's for action.
Well, I mean, I'm using that term loosely, because you had asked us a lot of questions on June 5th that you wanted to work on informally tonight before the actual public hearing on the pre-annexation, pre-annexation zoning. You wanted to know the adjacent uses, you wanted to know, so that's why we had this session before the public hearing for you.
Bob?
Hi, just a quick question, not...
And you are?
Bob Harrison, City Administrator, thank you, Chair. So, from our standpoint, I think kind of what's driving this piece is the commitment with the Century Link parcel, because we need, that applicant needs to really have a well-defined understanding that this use can move there. If the other portion was undecided at this point, could we go to the Boundary Review Board? Could we do the property split first? Go to the Boundary Review Board with those pieces that we know? And if we got to spend three months or four months with the school district to finalize what their site would kind of look like, would we be able to go back to the BRB for that remaining portion, or no?
We don't, so, we don't have to go to, we don't, so BRB doesn't care.
Yeah.
So we can put, so as long as we have zoning, and, you know, it can be OS if that's a more comfortable decision, you know, what, what happened then is if that zoning gets put in place and annexed that way, and then there wants to be a conversation about rezoning it to CFF, and that's fully executed within the city.
Right, yeah, I'd say, so you get that, so, but the other option is if you just leave a portion in the county and do the annexation later, you could do that, right?
Yeah, we all want to do that.
I know, well, that was the reason why we bought all these county parcels, was to get them out, but if there was a desire to have more detail, which I kind of heard, that would be another option. It's not the greatest option, but it would be another option.
I don't think the RB would approve it if we left part of it in the, if we continue to do it.
Left it in the county with a understanding, okay.
Right, because then it's the share of...
Well, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, because then they have to provide services, and I think King County wouldn't want that either.
Right, I, I think the other piece too, I just wanted to raise, was while we've talked about the upper bench as being, because we, we definitely, the administration has a preference that it be a school site, but there is other zoning that you could put on the site too, right? You could put single-family, or you could put other uses on the site, so when council is looking at those options.
But it's CFO.
Right, I'm just saying that when we look at reselling that upper bench, though, you know, zoning and all those things end up rolling into the final price, I suspect, in terms of what the appraisal might be.
That was, that was very helpful, and I guess my concern goes back to, we haven't had community comments, have we?
Nope.
Yeah, okay. My question would be, when does the community get to join in the conversation here? And so maybe we'll let some comments from the public happen and see where they are in it, but it feels like, to me, like we're walking down a path and not even aware of what we're doing.
The schools were also here, they wanted to present some information to the committee tonight as well.
Any more questions?
Stage, no.
Does the committee mind if before we go to public comment, I invite the district representatives to, what they would like to present? I think we have a...
Want to put the map back up?
Superintendent here, and... Montilli and Steve Crawford. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Couldn't think of a place I'd rather be on a sunny July night. No, we appreciate the opportunity.
I can't think of about 10 other places that I would like to be on tonight's weather.
Mr. Crawford does have a few PowerPoint slides we'd like to walk you through as we talk about the potential use of this property up by Swedish Hospital.
Let's see, here, system.
Slideshow, Steve, go one more, there you go, from beginning, all the way left. There you go.
There we go.
So, so I, I guess I would only ask that because we're not deciding about a school, that we keep it on the briefer side, we can see the slides, but we're not, we're not going to be deciding about a school, yeah, so we'll kind of roll through them.
Pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Should you just be able to hit the return button, Steve?
Hold it down, the arrow down, this one.
There we go.
All right. So, why is it a good site for an elementary school? Clark Elementary is going to have a projected enrollment in 2017, 18 of 808 students. It's our largest elementary school, we've added more classrooms there than we have in any other school. It's still going to open with 10 portable classrooms. Grand Ridge Elementary, projected to have 735 students. There's 125 kindergarten students that are currently transported to Challenger and Endeavor Elementary Schools. Grand Rid, all, Grand Ridge also has 10 portable classrooms. This just shows you what the attendance area boundaries are for Grand Ridge, doesn't quite get down to Highlands Drive, and that Clark Elementary serves the rest of the surrounding area, including considerable area, just a little bit larger scale map of the Grand Ridge attendance, in case there was any questions there. This shows how the Grand Ridge attendance area is split, with the pink area kindergarten kids going to Challenger, and kindergarten kids that live in the green area going to Endeavor. Endeavor's off of Dooley Hill Road, Challenger's in the Klahani subdivision area. Esqaw Valley takes care of the Valley Core area, with the Clark area coming just to Front Street. So, 2016, 2017, there's 80 Grand Ridge kindergarten students that are transported to Challenger, there's 45 Grand Ridge kindergarten students transferred to, transported to Endeavor, there's 337 Highlands Elementary students that are transported to Clark, there's 173 elementary students in the Black Nugget Overdale area that are transported to Clark. 510 students are transported out of the area to Clark, well, that's from the Highlands specifically, and if you include the Overdale, Black Nugget area, 635 students are transported to Clark. And I say transported because we provide bus service, but there are some that get transported by their parents. So if you look at the trip generation numbers per student from our Clark traffic study, those students generate 82 a.m. peak trips, 173 afternoon peak trips, and the p.m. peak is another 107 trips to and from Clark. So there's 362 trips every day of trips related to those students being transported to Clark Elementary that are coming through the urban core, Second Avenue, Front Street, et cetera. Reducing enrollment at Clark is critical to accommodate core area growth at both IVE and Clark. We need capacity down here for the growth that's coming. Grand Ridge Elementary is on a 10-acre site. Going to an urban school plan, a three-story building with its compacted footprint, reduce surface parking, including structured parking and smaller play areas, allows reducing the proposed footprint to about seven acres. OSPI recommends 10 acres for an elementary school. Getting to seven acres is condensing things pretty much as far as it can go. This is a conceptual plan of the site, and this is the northwest corner of the King County parcel that you've required, and basically, there is Swedish parking in this area currently, Swedish Hospital is in this area, there's new residential development that's under construction in this zone. So basically, accessing off the north end, coming in, structured parking to reduce the surface area there. We're proposing this would be a three-story building, and that allows us to compact the footprint pretty much as far as we can go, in any kind of realistic sense. And we have some hard surface play area around the west and south side of the building, two covered play areas, which is typical for new elementaries, and provision for three, although we generally go with four future portables to accommodate flex growth patterns, and a sand playfield on the south end here. Topography of the area is such that there's kind of a hump on the north end, there's a valley... There's a valley, a low spot in the middle, and another hump down in this area. So yes, there would be some grading that would tend to level out those areas. The admin area and the park, the parking would be set down into grade. The admin area would be at the mid-level of the three-story building, which then steps down as the site's going downward, reduces the overall height. And the sand play field is kind of a balance in this area. So what we're really showing here is that the western side of this footprint would pretty well correspond to the west leg of the dogleg of the parcel that you acquired. And that we sort of follow a contour level from there back on around to the southeast. And yes, there'd be some grading on the top. The trees around the west and the south side would remain in place. And those trees are going to screen the building from views from the south and from the westerly areas. The school building will be compatible with existing Highlands residential and commercial development. A neighborhood school serves the local community, reduces transportation, and enhances sustainability goals. It's a great spot for a school.
Thank you, Steve. I also wanted to thank Gail Morgan, our Director of Transportation. She put a lot of those numbers together for us. One comment too about the, obviously, the advantage of not having to transport that many kids down off, down to the valley floor. You're not simply replacing those transit trips with other transit trips because a good chunk of this school would ultimately be a walking school as well. So you literally could take cars out of circulation. You know, when I've gone around over the years and done bond presentations and talked about building schools, one of the things that I've always told people is, because the first question they always ask me, where are you going to put them? Where are you going to put the schools? Well, we never know that in a bond campaign because we have to purchase the land and all that. But one thing I always say is, we try to put them as close to where the kids are as we can. Because we believe that's the most sustainable. We recognize the impact that we have on traffic and so forth. So just the idea of this site is very, very appealing to us for all the reasons that Steve just mentioned. I'm sure it would be very popular in that community as well.
Thank you. So, it's, it's very tempting for me to say, let's ask questions. But we're not, we're not, we're not having discussions about the merits of your proposal. And so I'm, I'm really hesitant to do that unless you, we could ask a whole lot of questions, but that's really not what's on the agenda. That makes sense.
Does, I would like to just make a brief comment. Thank you for the information, especially the layout and the numbers. It is part of the, we do have a large decision to make, it's got multi-pieces to it. So thank you for preparing that, thank you, and bringing it forward this evening is helpful.
Glad you're available to come.
Thanks for the opportunity, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Then we're going to go to public comment.
So, just a quick question, the Highlands community population is
Bigger than we expected originally, and so that's why there's a desire for a second site? Bigger than the master agreement expected?
Yes, so, and that's for two reasons. So one, there, everything that could convert to residential, converted to residential. There was also additional enhancement units and then TDRs. But also, a big function of that is there's more kids turning up in apartment complexes than what was originally envisioned. I mean, the old school of thought was that apartments generally don't generate a big kid population.
That's good.
Yeah, good, thanks. All right, public comment. Connie?
So what is remarkable about the zoning here is when you look at the forested slope, which you can basically see how much of it is zoned CFF. The WashDOT parcel, CFF, which means they could develop large buildings on those slopes and the trees would be gone. And the intensive commercial, not so bad, we aren't going to see it. I'm for that section, so don't get me wrong, I'm loving that section. The steep slope area that we're calling CFO is unbuildable anyway. So that's going to stay forested no matter what we do. And then the top of the hill, which you can actually see the development already of the Isqwa Highlands through the fringe of trees. So the Highlands would then become visible if you cut the, the trees at the top of that slope. So now, when we look at the different zoning capacities and our duking it out policies in our comprehensive plan, right now, in our land use segment of our comprehensive plan, we are very strong in protecting our forested hillsides. It is in our vision statement as a priority concern. And so, wow, I believe that Isqwa Highlands, for example, would need a school. I don't think that what we want to do is create a zoning that would allow for the main, one of our main visions and our plan to be compromised. I think it would be better to go with a open space zoning, intensive commercial. And then I would like to understand exactly what WashDOT is intending with their CFF zoning on those parcels and what impacts that that might have. Because if their current zoning is residential, I don't know why we wouldn't transfer it over as residential, except for they say they don't want it. So there seems to be some information missing out of those zones that I don't understand the rationale for entirely. So maybe if they had an argument as to what their future was, that would be appropriate. So, competing uses for land, and also, Mr. Harrison talked about selling the top parcel, which was interesting. If indeed you were looking at this to maximize funding, you would indeed put zoning on that where you would get the most amount of money. So as soon as you put CFF, you are very much limiting the amount of money that you could get by selling the parcel. As soon as you turn it into a zoning that allows commercial or residential, if money-making is your primary concern, then you get the money. So I think there's a lot of considerations here. How much would it be worth if it was zoned in different areas? And it seems that we already have cleared land in other parts of the Isqwa Highlands that could potentially accommodate a school. What, what are those areas so that you can understand your zoning concerns more completely? And again, I'm going to reiterate, intensive commercial, less than CFF for WashDOT, and clearly, an overwhelmingly open space for the top parcel, thanks.
Thank you. Eve?
Hi, so I largely won't repeat Connie's comments because she's articulated it quite well. Just, again, the vision for Isqwa was the slopes, the city's area would be maintained, not developed. I lean more towards CFO, not towards the other building use on the site. So I do understand Isqwa Highlands wanting to school in that area. I'm not sure that this site is the best site for that. So I think that, at this point, isn't part of the equation. Again, what's the best use of the land, it's within the vision of our treed slopes, thanks.
Thank you. Cory?
Cory Christensen. I'd like to echo the other people's comments about how these parcels should be zoned open space. And actually, I think they should be permanently protected open space and maybe be a transfer of development rights, hold, or receiving site. As far as the entire TOD project, briefly back to the multifamily exemption. People in my neighborhood, when I talk about, when they talk to me about this, they're, they're rather ambivalent about this entire project. And when they start hearing about the tax exemption, they don't like it. Because when you talk about a city share, that's only a little bit. In the property tax, there's schools, there's parks, there's all this other stuff. And so it's actually a fairly big ask of the citizens. Now, the part, that's not the part that actually pushes people over. The part that pushes people over is seeing these upper three parcels potentially stripped of their trees. And the people in Isqwa have been very clear, very consistent about protecting the environment, open space, a large part of our park bonds, we vote to buy open space. And I've lived in my house for 23 years. 23 years ago, there, there were just trees, treed hillsides was the Isqwa Highlands. Treed hillsides was Talis. And we remember that, we didn't fight the Isqwa Highlands, we didn't fight Talis. And, but now, people are upset about Bergzema. People are upset about Talis 9. Because Talis 9, one of the contributing factors there were trees being taken down. And the mudslide down Talis Drive and so on and so forth. This is just another example of more of the same. And this treed area is actually the last stand. It's not just one little parcel in, you know, that you can just say that, that is the, that, that, it is the last stand, I just, it, I'm at a loss for words because I can't actually believe you are even considering taking the trees down on this parcel. That's how I feel about it. Lastly, when you, when you put up your timeline through September, people have been asking me, how do we fight this? And we're not waiting till September to start fighting this. We're going to start fighting it now, and I don't mean to sound threatening, but the fight, it will not be just those trees, it's the entire project. And so if you really like the entire affordable housing concept, if you like moving CenturyLink, I think you have to ask yourself, what is the public benefit, or actually more, what is the public takeaway? You know, you've got, you're asking, you're making a large ask in taxes for the public. You're asking a large ask for the public as far as accommodating a lot more cars and not contributing anything to infrastructure. You're asking us, again, to accommodate a lot more people for our parks and no, no money for that. And you're asking for people, more people poured onto Newport Way that it already is gridlocked. And on top of that, you're asking us to give up our trees, our last stand. So, no, thank you.
Thanks Cory, anybody else? Public comment? Seeing none, okay, back to the committee. So, our specific ask tonight, Trish, is whether we want to recommend to the full council that we annex the area, right?
We've already done the resolution to move forward.
Sorry, sorry, is it just the zoning?
Right, it's to, we've already advertised for the public, the first of the two, for the 17th. So I think the ask was, do you have any more questions that you would want us to try to answer for the 17th?
So do we not make a recommend?
So everything's already rolling. This is just, I think, if, so what we're trying to do, I think, is to give you guys whatever additional information you would find helpful to have the pre-annexation conversation more conclusive than this conversation has been, right?
It does say for action, though.
It does say for action.
Doesn't say for information.
And as I recall, when it was at the council, when we referred it here, I specifically said, this is coming to land and shore, we'll have more discussion there. Plus, it says action, so I'm a little bit confused.
Yeah, I see that there's an A on the land and shore, but I had always thought this was just for you to gain more information and discuss what you had asked for on June 5th. Because everything else is rolling, as Keith said.
And is that because it's quasi-judicial? We don't make a recommendation?
It is that.
Okay.
I'm still confused.
I am too.
Because we technically didn't have to have the, this in the middle of the two public hearings, but you had asked on June 5th, you thought it would be a good idea to have sort of a, a discussion with more information before you went to the first public hearing.
No, I don't think we asked that. That's, I have zero recollection of that. I figured that it was the regular process to get referred to land and shore for a recommendation out. We didn't even discuss that it was quasi-judicial at the time, that we talked about this at full council, so.
So my confusion is when it, when it means it's rolling, what action did we take on this, AB?
On June 5th, you approved the resolution to move forward. If you look on the cover of the Agenda Bill, it says, the proposed resolution declared the city's intent to annex the King County Island, you included the boundaries. You stated the annexation area will assume the proportionate share of indebtedness as of the effective date. You set two public hearing dates for considering the pre-annexation zoning. And you set a public hearing for the actual annexation hearing. And you authorized the administration to proceed with the annexation by submitting the notice of intent to the boundary review board. That was all done on June 5th.
Yes, but if you go to the last two lines, refer to the July 6th Council Land and Shore Committee for review and recommendation. Am I missing something?
No, you're right, that's what it says.
City Administrator, what do we, what's the, what is the process? What's? So, so I think the question is really about, you know, is this inconsistent with what we're supposed to do with quasi-judicial? Are we supposed to make a recommendation? It was not my understanding that we were just going to chat about it and provide more questions.
So, you know, having read the Agenda Bill, I guess what I would say is, the Agenda Bill's looking for a recommendation coming out of this committee for establishing the pre-annexation zoning. So if the committee is ready to make that recommendation, then that would be the action that would be taken this evening. If the committee's not ready, it can stay in committee because we're having more land and shore meetings before September 5th, right?
Sure, we can, and I'm not concerned about whether we're ready or not, I'm guessing that we are. That's what we were told in our Agenda Bill that we were going to be doing. So that's what I was thinking about when I was reading it. But my concern is, are we doing something that out, that is outside what should be done if it's a quasi-judicial process? That would be my concern.
Right, your Agenda Bill talks about the two public hearings, that the first one, the public may offer testimony and you can talk about it, but you don't have to make any action at the first public hearing. I think the intent is to keep an open mind, see if there's any questions that come up that you'd like us to research, which is why the state requires 30 days in between the two hearings on pre-annexation zoning, so that there's a time that you can get, we can gather information to help you make the decision.
So here's what I would
So, if you would give me one more opportunity, I, so for me, it seems inappropriate for you guys to make a recommendation without hearing the public comment.
It says the testimony.
Right? I mean, because you're basing it based on the three comments you've heard tonight. And you may get, you know, 100 people from the Highlands, I don't know what you'll get, but it seems like making a recommendation is premature in advance of the hearing. That's the reason why you have a hearing is to help inform ultimately the council decision, right?
So, there, it wouldn't come back, so we have a time sensitivity, do we not? So if we have two public hearings, one on July 17th and one on September 5th, it wouldn't be appropriate then, based on your rationale, for us to make a recommendation at all before September 5th? So, um, so I guess what, maybe what we do is we hold off and, I don't know.
I would agree that that would be most prudent because you haven't had your public hearings yet on the zoning.
Would it be appropriate then to make comments? Questions, I mean, concerns we have about the proposed zoning?
Sure, and, and then that gives us a chance to research or provide more information or whatever before the 17th.
And that gives you all a chance to research it as well, what land and shore's role should be in this?
Right.
Clarify.
Are there more questions that you want us to research other than, I had Are there more questions that you want us to research, other than, I had a few from Paul? What would all of the uses be and how would it be built out with a short plat? And I have the one, what would, what is WashDOT thinking about for the future of their land uses? Those are the two that I have, that I heard.
Yeah, I guess on that second one on WashDOT is that I'm a little uncomfortable with that zoning proposal.
So I'll speak up for my peer who decided he wanted to go home and have dinner. So when we purchased Park Point, we basically took, oh, so the way our water reservoirs work is reservoirs have to be at a certain elevation to serve a certain portion of the city. So the water plan that we have showed a 297 reservoir on Park Point. And when we bought Park Point and preserved its open space, it displaced a critical piece of our infrastructure necessary to serve water on the valley floor. And so as you, as you go around the city and look for another parcel that's at the 297 band, these ones are at the 297 band. So Sheldon has been having conversations with WashDOT about whether or not the city could purchase, the water utility could purchase one of these properties, build a water reservoir. Conversation then turned from WashDOT to Mountains to Sound, how could you do that and not have it visible from the freeway? And so that's kind of where this is. But I guess, and I don't know what conversations have been had with WashDOT about the pre-annexation zoning. It could be similar to, I mean, so, you know, you could do it CFO and then come in later and change it to CFF if the city bought it for a water reservoir. You know, that option's there too. I don't know why all of it is showing up as CFF, because, you know, you only need one of them for a water reservoir, and I don't know what else would happen on the rest of them.
So here's where I think we are. I think the committee members should provide some comments, if you're comfortable doing that now, or if you have additional questions, and then I think we need to move on to the next agenda bill.
Okay. Some comments?
Who wants to start?
Any comments if you want? I think the thing that drives me absolutely crazy is that none of that, if I'm a citizen trying to follow this, there's just no transparency. In terms of what these parcels might be used for, whether it's a school, whether it's a water tower, and it, it makes the whole thing so difficult. And so I don't know with our rules if you can amend your agenda bill or whatever, but what is missing here is some sort of narrative that would put any context or transparency on this for the public. It just doesn't make any sense. So it's not just what might they use it for? That whole story you just told is nowhere. Not that that's what it's going to be, maybe it's not a water tower, but there, it's just, this is completely hidden from the public. And their opportunity to join in on any of the conversation, they'll come to the public hearing and they'll see what we saw tonight, and unless they watch the tape and hear you say what you said and hear the school district's presentation, this is just hidden. It's just totally hidden. So I don't know how you fix that, but that's just the way it comes across. It's not very transparent.
So I would agree with those comments, and at this point, I don't understand at all why we don't leave everything CF, have everything be CFO, except the IC, because there's a, there does seem to be a real-time sensitivity on that one, and that we've at least talked about before. But my comments about CFO at this point have nothing to do with the merits of the site as a potential school site. There's just, I just don't have enough information to even know whether, whether that would be an appropriate site, and so I don't want my comments to be misconstrued by our good friends of the school district as me not supporting that for a school. I just, it's, I just don't think it's appropriate this time to do CFF. At least I don't, that's my comment tonight. And same thing with the WashDOT. You know, I think the answer WashDOT wants it is just, really falls short for reasoning for me. And the fact that we're already working on something that we know nothing about, but oh, but just do CFF because they might be thinking about something, it's just, yeah, that's really concerning to me. We keep hearing that we make decisions before it's out in the public, and this is a perfect example of why some people feel that way.
Seems like I've heard talk about a water tower for a couple of years. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, that's been out there for a long time.
But I was never clear about the location, and I remember fearing that it would interfere kind of the open space that's already used by the public on the west side of Highlands Drive, where there is the footpath, that it might go into that area. But I think I asked that once and it was dispelled, no, it wouldn't go there. Is that, that, is that, is this the water tower? Is that the same water tower?
Yes.
Okay, so it's kind of in that.
It has to be at that elevation.
Yeah, understood, understood. And of course, the packet does have the information from the letter from the school district and the location, that they even kind of drew a seven acre box around the location. So that, we knew that the concept of a school was, that's there. And I think the whole TOD project as well said, did specify this location for, for that maintenance yard for, or whatever it's called, for CenturyLink. So those, those uses are out there, not in a lot of detail yet, but sufficient to know what the potential land uses are. So I'm glad to know, to learn more now about the other potential use, the water tower. It would be good to add that in there. So the, so coming into this meeting, I thought the same thing, that this is a pre, we're going to have a pre, we have to set the annexation prior to the hearing, and the administration has made a proposal, that's the way I look at this. It's IC and then the CFO and CFF. And, and I came here wondering why CFF was anywhere other than what the school district identified as a location that maybe they could use. So the, so IC, as proposed, makes sense. The CFO makes sense where it is. The, but the CFF beyond what, beyond what the school district identified as what they're interested, didn't make any sense. And now we hear that maybe there's a, it might be in one of those areas that a water tower, but that's not what was said earlier. Said what the WashDOT might want. Is there something else being referred to then? Something separate then, a water tower that we need, not what WashDOT wants?
I do not know of anything other than the conversation between PWE and WashDOT about a reservoir. So I don't know why the other parcels, I think, I think there's, there's like actually an existing bench on one of those that's the right spot for the reservoir. It would be screened from the freeway, it's perfect. So I don't know why the rest of it's CFF. And I don't know if WashDOT, if that was their ask to make it CFF.
That's what Sheldon, I'm just going with what Sheldon told me, I didn't know.
We need to tighten that down, clearly. You know, but part of that is, is a necessity of our water utility expansion. So that would be, so I think, one of the things that I think we need to provide you all before the hearing is probably a land plan for all the property with the stuff that we know that's coming, even if it's conceptual, to show it what it's going to look like.
What's potential, what's been discussed? You said what's coming.
Exactly, sorry, potential. And that way you can see what, at least we believe, is going to be the outcome of that, assuming you make the zoning consistent with what the administration is recommending. So that part, you know, when Trish summarized, I also heard an expectation of understanding, grading impacts. If the school were to move forward, and that's another piece, we can, so we can provide some of that technical information, because then you guys can understand, make a better decision on what to do with the property.
So the only thing that I would recommend, or would want to see different, is, is keeping the potential school area at a pre-annexation level of CFF. I mean, IC, everything's CFO, and then just that seven acres.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, next, I guess this one may be simpler.
Because we're all tired.
No, because it's, yeah, because it is. Agenda Bill 7442. Thank you, Gail, Steve, and Ron for coming.
And you know, before, that last picture that you had up there.
Yeah, you didn't even let me get through.
You said it, "Thank you," that showed potential CFF where the school district indicated their interest. That drawing isn't even, that up in the upper right, that's in the upper right.
Oh, this?
It's not close.
That's not even close to the seven acres at the school district. That's twice as big.
And this was drawn in June before we even knew, so, right.
So my, my message is that that information conveys something that's not even close to what we're discussing. That's, and so that's what's out there.
Yes.
So it's pretty easy to look at that and go, oh my gosh.
Right.
This is, this is, this is quite different.
Right. It's evolved a lot since beginning of June. But also too, we tried to do the, once we heard from them and what their idea was, we tried to figure out how to draw it on the contours, because before, the map that you saw that are just the stick-dash-lines was just to get it to boundary review board with. There's an idea that there might be three different zones within the parcel.
Okay, we're moving on.
Thank you.
Agenda Bill 7442. Trish?
Here.
Trish, welcome.
Shazam. This is very similar, I hope easier than the previous one, because this is a very, very small parcel, less than two acres, owned by the city of Bellevue. It is already the site of a reservoir. We took it over in the assumption that you all approved, that became effective January 1st of this year. And now that we've assumed it as a utility, now we get to bring it into our jurisdiction. And it's completely surrounded by the city limits. This is it, this teeny tiny little gray parcel.
And it already has a reservoir on it.
Yes.
So there's no potential development of it.
And it's surrounded by trees, which is, I couldn't even get an aerial picture of it, because it just is so beautifully surrounded by trees.
What does the landowner, what does the landowner want?
Do you bring Bellevue utility people with you so we could talk about it?
Knows that we're taking it over. So this also gets the two public hearings, it gets all the same thing, but not the intrigue that the previous annexation had.
Intrigue.
Are there questions about the tiny little utility site? Not even two acres?
So is this the same thing, only if we have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay, so I have none.
No questions? Paul, no questions?
Nice map.
Okay, then.
So.
That's it?
I guess I need to.
A public comment?
Public comment on it?
Bellevue? No?
Okay.
We need evidence of that. Just joking, it's late.
I'm still here, right?
Yes.
Yes, I am. So in our Isaguac CFF zone, are we going to keep the trees or are we going to cut the trees down from around the reservoir so that we can see it? That's pretty jaded. But you know, it's, I, I think we, we probably could, because I, I walk around a reservoir all the time, and they've carefully cut all the trees out from around the reservoir that I walk around all the time. So I would ask that question, in all seriousness.
So can we get that answer?
That's a question.
Yeah, that's a question.
PWO, I can ask what their practice is for tree maintenance around utilities.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.